Good day. Welcome to the presenters, ladies, gentlemen, students. Thank you so much for coming out today. My name is Mary Moorhead and I'm your Board of Education representative for the District of St. Croix. I am the host of this event and I'm very happy that you came out to hold and hear the presenters and give your participation with the public education system. The objective of this gathering is to provide you with an opportunity to participate in the reform of public school education because what is created now will impact the Virgin Islands for the next 30 to 50 years. So we must design a 21st century public school education that will teach students the skills they need to grow our economy in hospitality, in technology, in agriculture, in environmental health, in banking, in whatever industry, and it must happen in facilities that are conducive to learning. The Virgin Islands, the Virgin Islands Code gives the Board of Education powers. Specifically, the Code 17 title, Section 21A, says, and I quote, to the Board of Education, "Do anything necessary for proper establishment, maintenance, management, and operation of the public schools of the Virgin Islands." So the Board can use that power to support a 21st century, state-of-the-art, public education system that you can help to create. And I do thank you for coming to do just that. I am now going to turn this meeting over to our moderator, Laurie Larson. Lauren Larry Larson is a product of the public and parochial education systems in St. Croix. After receiving a bachelor's of degree and a master's degree from Morgan State, he returned to St. Croix to begin a career in education. He began teaching at the Elena Christian Junior High School immediately after obtaining his master's degree. Subsequently, he returned to the U.S. to pursue a doctorate at Howard University. While attending Howard University, he took a position to teach Advanced Placement U.S. History at the Benjamin Benaker High School in Washington, D.C. At the same time, he was also asked to teach courses in the African diaspora at Howard University. While teaching at Howard University, he took on additional part-time teaching assignments at colleges and universities in Washington, Maryland, Virginia metro area. Since returning to the Virgin Islands over 20 years, he has served in various administrative capacities in the VI Department of Education. He has served as St. Croix District Director for Curriculum Assessment and Technology. He has served as Deputy Commissioner for Curriculum and Instruction and Acting Commissioner of Education. He currently serves as the Social Studies Coordinator for the St. Croix District. He also teaches courses in history and education on a part-time basis at the University of the Virgin Islands. He has extensive experience in education, especially in the area of curriculum design and development, and has been involved in many projects and initiatives in the VI Department of Education. Please welcome Lauren Larson, Ph.D.
Thank you, Ms. Moorhead. As moderator, I want to take this opportunity to welcome you to this town meeting. This is designed to get community involvement, stimulate community engagement, and get ideas in terms of how we can improve our educational system. I'd like to commend Ms. Moorhead for her efforts in facilitating this event, and I'd ask that to give her a round of applause. These are some serious times, and we know how important education is. And we have with us a panel that I'd like to introduce, and they'll be allowed to share a summary of their vision of education for the Virgin Islands. First, the first panelist is Ms. Kiana Tong, and she's a 22-year-old currently pursuing a Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education with a concentration in English at the University of the Virgin Islands in St. Croix. Ms. Tong is the former president of the Student Government Association, former student representative of the UVI Senate, and the Presidential Advisory Committee, and she's a member of the Golden Key International Honor Society. In these capacities, she has the privilege of helping to improve UVI's new student orientation process. She has trained student assistant orientation leaders and has become the face of various UVI promotional pieces, to include the recent Free Tuition Policy video. As well, she has advocated for and successfully saw the addition of the goal of the university, five-year strategic plan, which mandates the development of UVI's HBCUs, events, and culture. Currently, she holds the position of Community Liaison in the office of Honorable Senator Alexandre de Gazan, and Ms. Tong is also titled radio personality, Kiki, the college student, acting as an occasional secondary co-host of Isle 95's Big Fat Morning Show. Please welcome Ms. Tong. Not yet, not yet. The next person we'd like to recognize and welcome is Ms. Diane Butler, who is situated right next to Ms. Tong. Ms. Butler is the past Chair of the St. Croix Chamber of Commerce, 2006 and 2018. She's an entrepreneur, a photographer, publisher, a restaurant owner, and she's an island resident living here for 29 years. And she has two daughters that attend the St. Croix Educational Complex. Please welcome Ms. Butler. Next, we have Ms. Yvette Brown. Ms. Brown serves as the USVI PTSA President. She has represented PTA for over 30 years. She's a parent, a business owner for Sager Farms VI, and her mission is to develop young people of the Virgin Islands with a focus on education, culture, and heritage. Please welcome Ms. Brown. The next person is someone I really don't need to introduce, but I can't make him feel left out, Senator Kurt Vila. Mr. Vila is a longtime crucial educator, former teacher, former school administrator. As you know, he served as the principal of the St. Croix Educational Complex, and until recently, when he decided to focus greater on the children of Virgin Islands by becoming a senator of the Virgin Islands Legislature. Under his leadership at this school, the St. Croix Educational Complex, which I think opened under his leadership, became one of the academic giants across the territory and across the Caribbean. And his vision, his support for his teachers and students propelled this school to the forefront of Virgin Islands academics. And now, with his work in the legislature, he continues to focus on supporting education, supporting our young people with a eye on all students across the territory, local, public, as well as private. Please welcome Mr. Vila. Last, and certainly not least, is Mr. Victor Somme III. Victor Somme III has 29 years of public service to the people of the Virgin Islands, of which 21 years has been in leadership in education, public policy, and natural resource management. He has been promoted through the teaching ranks and now serves as the Deputy Superintendent for the St. Croix District in the Department of Education. In addition to his teaching and leadership experience in education, he has spent eight years at the helm of the Virgin Islands Energy Office and the Virgin Islands Coastal Zone Management Program, both within the Department of Planning and Natural Resources. Prior to his current assignment as Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Somme served as the Director of the St. Croix Alternative Education Program for 13 years. It was in this assignment that he adopted the philosophy of Kofi Annan, former UN General Secretary. Knowledge is power. Information is liberating. Education is the premise of progress in every society, in every family. Please welcome Mr. Somme. We will begin the presentations, and I've been told that we should do it from the table as opposed to the podium. So we'll pass the mic, and we'll go down the line from Ms. Tong to Mr. Somme. And Ms. Tong will now give her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. As a proud product of our public education system and as a future educator, the 21st century education looks like a few things for me, first of which being going back to the basics, speaking about things like financial literacy, for example. It is a part of our VI Code for grades levels K through 12, but the question is, is it actually being enforced, or is it being enforced as effectively as it could be? For example, I've been previewed to situations where some freshman students who are beginning to apply for college or trying to accept their charges to actually attend the school, and they don't know the difference between subsidized and unsubsidized loans. And that's a very big problem because ultimately, when we have young people who don't know the difference between those types of things, we're actually setting up our young people for financial failures and putting them in debt, which is a major situation. Second of which, I think something we need to focus on is more trauma-informed care training for all staff and persons who directly interact with students. Reason being, there's a misconception that there is an age group where people experience trauma or experience things that really affect their lives. And the truth of the matter is, as early as elementary school, they're not too young to be experiencing real situations. I mean, a lot of our, even up to kindergartners, they're in situations where at home, they're experiencing poverty, they're being abused, they're being molested, they're being bullied, and this is a serious situation because ultimately, some of these issues are what is the root causes of behavioral problems, and we're wondering, you know, why teachers sometimes struggle with curtailing behavioral issues. So if all of us were more prepared to actually handle situations and notice red flags in young people, then we might be able to assist situations from the root as opposed to waiting till after the fact to address behavioral issues. Another situation that I think that we need to really keep in mind when it comes to 21st century education is more summer institutes that focus primarily on STEAM programs. We wait personally, in my opinion, a little too late to really explore what young people are interested in. We wait until junior high level or high school level to really start exposing them to sciences and to mathematics, and we often end up in situations where by the time they do come to college, they have no idea what they want to major in, and in part is because they're not allowed to explore the things that they're interested in. So if we were able to encourage, you know, this type of exploration through higher education institutes like UVI, for example, young people will have the opportunity to figure out what it is that they really want to do with their lives and what they're interested in before coming to college. Another thing that I think that we really need to focus on is stronger anti-bullying campaigns. For example, our youth as early as elementary school utilize verbiage like, "Oh, you're a rat," or "You're a snitch." And, you know, oftentimes it kind of goes over our head. We see it as just general verbiage and things that young people say, but the truth of the matter is that utilizing such words is actually conditioning our children when they become older to think that it's a bad thing to speak out against things that is happening to them and things that they see that's incorrect, that's happening in our community. So we can't expect them as adults to speak out when they see crime happening and when they know who are doing crimes, who are committing crimes, or when they're experiencing abuse, we can't expect them to communicate with us if, you know, we're not creating a space where they feel comfortable enough to talk to us. Another thing that I really want to encourage us to pay more attention to is engaging teachers in more training so that they can diversify their teaching styles and become more knowledgeable in subject areas so that they're able to teach certain skills in multiple ways. For example, you know, not to step on any toes, but from my personal experiences, I've had teachers where they would teach one thing, and if I didn't understand it that particular way, I would be in trouble. But the truth of the matter is that education is not a cookie cutter, one-size-you-know-shoe-fits-all situation. We have individual students, and they're all their own people, and we need to be able to create more individualized learning so that they can actually follow the materials and be more prepared for the world that they're coming in. Because in actuality, we're preparing young people for problems that don't even exist yet, and we're preparing them for jobs that also don't exist yet. So we need to focus on skills like critical thinking, creativity, innovation, because they need to be able to think beyond just what we're teaching in the classroom, but allow them to explore their own thinking and be able to address real problems and be able to think more creatively about the issues that we're going to be facing in the near future. Lastly, I really want to encourage persons to focus on the utilization of technology. I mean, right now, we have technologies that would be able to assist us with individualized learning. For example, you know, using different apps or software where students are actually able, the apps are actually able to assess the students' strong points and weak points, what they need to focus on, and it can actually develop a curriculum specific for that child, and that way, you know, they won't be getting left behind. Everything will be taught to them at a level that they can follow, and the teachers would be more free to float the room, assist, to work with small groups, and just assist them where they really need the assistance, more in particular. I really want to take this time also to encourage parents to work with teachers and not against teachers. You know, the truth is that students spend more time with their teachers from Monday through Friday than they do at home. And, you know, we can't have this mentality as adults where we don't want teachers to curtail certain behaviors, and we don't want our teachers to talk to our children because they're the ones that are spending the most time with our kids. Not necessarily to, you know, to beat them physically, but we need to be able to create a healthy relationship between parents and teachers so that teachers are comfortable with talking to students and so that, you know, just take the time to do things with students like helping them with homework, asking them what they're learning in class, actually engaging them in real dialogue about the things that they're learning, and being comfortable enough to communicate with teachers and let them know, you know, based on the discussion I had with my child today, I can see that they really grasp a certain concept, or based on the questions that I was asking, I can see that they're really having problems, and just create that comfortable networking and communication between parent and teacher so that holistically we could work better together to assist the children. And, you know, holistically, I just want to really state that it takes a village to raise a child, not just raise a child, but it takes a village to educate those children. And we're preparing the children for a future that's coming. So we have to, you know, work together and be cognizant of the fact that education needs to be geared towards young people and towards what's going to be happening in our future. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Good evening, fellow panelists, listening audience. Thanks for coming tonight. My name is Diane, and I'm the Vice Chair of the St. Croix Chamber of Commerce, and the St. Croix Chamber of Commerce is a business advocacy group, which anyone can join, but basically, we try to work with the government and try to do good business practices and have good business being done. So I asked our membership their thoughts to the question of 21st century education, particularly on St. Croix. So I will share some of my personal thoughts, but I'm going to start with some of our members, anonymous members' thoughts. And then when I was thinking about today and what I was going to talk about, I thought about what I would have wanted to do different in high school now, being older and looking back and having daughters in high school now. I remember that the days were really long and seemed like they would never end so that I could actually get on and do my really important 16-year-old life, you know, in the afternoon. I enjoyed playing sports, and I enjoyed going to cheer on my teams and all the student body and parents being there. I enjoyed my teachers, my friends, and my classmates. And then I also enjoyed some of the quirky classes that were offered to us. And for instance, I had a class that I got to build a hay wagon in. Never have done that before, never have done it since, but that was an opportunity I got in a quirky class. So I want to start off by saying that I think that we have some of the best teachers here on St. Croix, from elementary through university. They're brilliant, they are diverse, and they are very hardworking. We need quality, well-paid, happy teachers, which means that they need to have a competitive salary and real benefits. Okay, so that being said, when we surveyed our members, one of the first comments was, number one, early childhood education, including public Montessori classrooms. Okay? Number two, require soft skills classes in middle and high school, which is verbal, written communications, teamwork, self-direction and motivation, creative problem-solving on the job, et cetera. Number three, sports are very important, and the fields and the gyms should be of a quality to support our athletes, and some sports should be all year long. My thoughts on that are that coaches, our teachers, and as well, should be treated similarly. Number four, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. Plus, I will add my own personal opinion that we need to also add patience and have the courage to change. There are three comments that were very similar. Number five, we should provide adequate programs to be up to date with technological advances. Number six, implement better programs to motivate students to become entrepreneurs and own their own companies. And number seven, the question was, is there a vocational training program for high school students? So all three of those questions sort of touched on the same thing, a technical school is what I was feeling. And so if I was to create the best technical school for high school students here on St. Croix, I would offer them classes in welding, plumbing, electricians, construction management, mechanics, accounting, financial responsibility and economics, certified nursing assistants, art and design, computer science, business, farming, and process operators for the lime tree industry that we have on our south shore. Now, all of these jobs, except for maybe the last one, are entrepreneurial jobs. Number eight, one of the biggest hindrances to the 25- to 35-year-olds has been associated with the understanding of debt and the high interest associated with many loans and credit cards. Without a solid grasp of these fundamentals, it can take college graduates 10 to 20 years to dig themselves out of debt. Being financially literate out of high school, it can help kickstart more of the younger generation becoming business owners and leaders in the community. I'm sure that many of us would rethink some of our financial choices, knowing all that we know now. Offering entrepreneurial classes focused on developing mock businesses would also instill a sense of independence in our younger generation. So those are some of the comments that we received from some of our members. To me, they were some of the better comments that maybe we could go jump off of and work from. And then at this time, I want to share some personal thoughts based on my involvement in the government's recovery task force after Hurricane Maria and hearing a lot of discussions and going to a lot of meetings about that. And also, as the Chair of our Education Committee, every year I get the pleasure of interviewing students for our scholarship, and we ask them really hard questions and real questions in the interview process, and I'm able to get their insight on what they want from our schools. So based on my own personal thoughts and some others I've heard, when I reflect back to what I would have wanted in high school and knowing then what I know now, I would want to go to my classes in the morning, and then I would want to choose what I would like to do in the afternoon. And if y'all remember, I'm sure this is what our students did the year after Hurricane Maria, and they did it without planning it, and y'all made it work. When I was at some of the meetings, I asked if, and I never got an answer, so I'm going to say it, but I always asked during these half-day classes, was there a spike in petty crime or teenage pregnancy? And I never heard that there was, which leads me to believe that our kids kept themselves busy, you know? There wasn't, they weren't wandering around the streets. They were able to responsibly do a half a day of school and a half a day at home. So if anyone knows its specifics of that, I would like to know. We all talk about the technical schools and the types of classes and the programs that we should teach, and that's all great stuff. So I wanted to offer a completely original 21st century idea, and that would be the shorter school day for high school students, with school in the morning and electives in the afternoon, a combination of school and hands-on learning. A combination of school and hands-on learning allowing students to develop varied interests. Imagine this same campus, more like a college campus with study labs and a computer and a mechanical shop. Afternoon electives are for technical high school classes or if you have a job or you want to practice more sports, life skills, if you need homework help for art and music. We can all offer our kids a place to learn critical lessons, skills and schoolbook knowledge. And at the same time, offer them a place to seek and discover quirky things that they may never have tried, like driving a tractor or building a robot. Thank you for inviting the St. Croix Chamber of Commerce and the business community to be involved in this discussion.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Brown, known for owner of Sage Farm of Virgin Islands. My discussion is gonna be focused a little bit more on parental involvement impacting our children's education and our role as being advocacy for our children's education. The vision that should engulf every individual in our community is how crucial it is that our educational system is in fact beneficial to our children's future. Since they are our foundation for tomorrow, any weak link in that system means that we are setting them up for failure. If we are not providing the correct educational system that prepares our children with the ability to function beyond high school, even without a college degree, then we are failing them. If we are not promoting self-development and self-enrichment to our children through a series of skill to include the vocational programs, then we are failing our children. I'm gonna stop there for a minute and kind of expound on that piece. And I can reference to what happened to us following two major storms in the Virgin Islands, where we had all those jobs available, skilled laborers, and yet our children were not qualified to fill those positions. When I had to stand on the side of the road and watch individuals being brought in from other islands to fill jobs that our children should have been able to carry out. That is failure. If we are more concerned about the accountability to a system instead of to our children, we have failed them. If parents, again, if parents are not an intricate part of the educational system, then we as parents have failed them. If we are not providing the correct educational system that focus on giving our children the capacity to speak proudly of who they are and their history, then we are definitely failing them. If our educational system continues to be led by a political agenda, then there is no hope because we continue to fail them. Today, I speak to you in reference to education, where we are, where we should be as representative of parents in our community. Every election, I have heard some of the most intricate platforms from individuals seeking office. I envision those platforms being implemented into our educational system, bringing about the changes we need. Unfortunately, that never happens. Our children have been offered, in some instances, mediocre guidance in education, which leaves them shipwrecked upon completion of their high school education. We need qualified teachers, administrators, support staff, but most important, parents who are truly involved in their children's education. We need better-equipped classrooms. Our curriculum needs to be enhanced and properly preserved for our children of the Virgin Islands. They need to learn financial management. In other words, our children need to learn how to function as a leader of a household. We need to ensure that when our children leave high school, they can function in a home if they become parents. Many years ago, I acknowledged how important it was that we as parents become advocates for our children's education. What has amazed me in that many years is that not many of us took up that capacity and that power that we have as parents. The sad part is that the few who do are always burned out. The PTA mission says that every child, one voice. That is to make every child potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. That means the curriculum must have the ability to train every child in our region regardless of their challenges. We are not seeking perfection, but a profoundly great intellectual guidance that is meaningful and useful to our children's future. Not just for lawyers, doctors and teachers, but also for the carpenters, childcare service providers, the mechanic, culinary professional and all other skilled laborers. That is my outlook and vision for a good educational system for the Virgin Islands.
Good evening, everyone. And let me begin by thanking Ms. Mohan for hosting this forum. She's been a fierce advocate for education since she retired. She's more of an advocate now as a retiree than when she was even working. So I want to applaud her. I was going to speak about the K-8 merger, but after hearing everybody, I have decided not to speak to that necessarily. And I will get there. I want to first begin by saying that the public school system have graduated thousands of educated individuals who have gone on to do very, very well. So the same system that everybody liked to complain and hit have produced countless, countless, very well-educated graduates that are shining not only here in the Virgin Islands, but all over the nation and all over the world. Saying that, I want to go to what can be considered one of the most literate countries in the Caribbean, which is Cuba. Cuba has a tremendous, tremendously high literacy rate. Do they have all the technology of the United States? No, they don't. Are the people rich? No, they're not. Do they have all the gadgets that we have? No, they don't. But what they have is an appreciation for education and an understanding that education is what would allow them to be able to move forward. What the Virgin Islands truly lack is that embracing of education throughout this community. And embracing education can be just for senators or teachers or administrators. Embracing of education must be every single individual who live here, understand the importance of education and send their child every single day, ready and willing to learn. Unfortunately, that is not the environment that we have. We have become an island that is socially, morally, ethically, gone. So the system now have to deal with those issues. And while the system have tried to deal with those issues, we have begun a process of adapting everything that the United States say work, we have tried to adapt in the Virgin Islands, which have led to a serious discouragement of individuals in the field of education who are excellent educators. Because we put more and more and more on the plate. So instead of looking at quality, no, this come from the mainland, we're gonna change the system to evaluate teachers. You know, have to fill out a hundred page, attach this, attach that. While evaluation could really be done by administrators, being able to observe the teachers and knowing who is doing quality work and not having busy work that's taking up hours. We speak about preparation for the 21st century, and that's very important. But in our quest to prepare for the 21st century, have we lost where we were? Back in the 60s, the Virgin Islands were one of the most educated places. Without the technology, back in the 60s, all of our residents literally were literate. Even those that dropped out of school could read, write, add, multiply and subtract. Technology has the ability to make it easier to learn, but technology also have the ability to make it hard to learn or to encourage you not to learn. Because you could buy term papers. You still have to go and go through encyclopedia and all the different reference material. You could do anything literally on your phone. So when you're speaking to the students of this generation, the microwave generation that have a way easier life because of all the technological advances. And I go to a seventh grade class and I asked a student when I was at Art Richards, six times five. And they said, wait, let me take out my phone and put on the calculator. And you say, well, do you know your timetable? But you know what one child told me? It is not necessary no longer to know your timetable. We always walk with a phone. When a child can't tell time on a regular clock because they've only been trained to read it on a phone, you know that we have issues. When you could have a Spanish assignment and just put in the English and translate and you have everything on your phone, it is stopping our children from learning. So I have looked at what do we really want our children to learn from K to third? K to third is the foundation. And we move away from that phonetic approach, teaching them how to actually read words based on syllables, et cetera. And we went to whole language, we went to all different type of stuff. We had made-up words, dabbles at one point, they could make up words and read. So we moved away from the basics. We had them come in and say that repetition doesn't work, so you shouldn't teach repetition in the classroom, so the children shouldn't be signing the timetable out loud over and over and over until it's stuck in their head. But have moving away from those basics hurt us more than helped us? I think it has. I sent my two children to learn phonics and I did the repetition in my car every day, driving my children with a timetable until they knew it inside out. How many of us in this community actually play those games with our children anymore? Making sure that they know the timetable, making sure that they could read and comprehend? We have changed. And if you don't get it by third grade, you're lost. And then we fast forward and we move to high school. And before I go there, we adopted Common Core state standards. We adapted the whole thing. We love it. Virgin Islands is gonna embrace Common Core state standard. And about 40 states embrace Common Core state standard. But every year, states started to drop, to revisit, to rethink. Does Common Core really work? They started that. States like Florida merged their state standards with Common Core and they came up with Florida State, Florida Common Core state standards. I had a bill to merge, to look at our Virgin Islands standards and look at Common Core and I began to merge them. I couldn't get it off the floor. But we have adapted a curriculum that is in no way, no way relevant to the Virgin Islands. And then we adopted a method of testing in which you don't test every day in the classroom. So when it comes time to testing, we pull on the computer and we say, okay, you're gonna take your Common Core state standard, the test is, I can't remember the test name now, Smarter Balance. And on the computer, you have to drag this, do this or that. But the test that they're taking on Smarter Balance isn't similar to what they're doing all year in the classroom. And then we move students from grade to grade to grade. And when we tried to have exit exams to make sure that they had basic competencies covered, the community was in an uproar. So if we can have our second graders and we say a second grader should know these basic skills. This is what, just the basic, I'm not talking vast, just these basic skills. But then a third grade, they should know multiplication. And we gave them an exit exam to make sure that they understand what they're being taught. If we don't want to do that because we don't want to have exit exams, then we're going to continue to fail our children. Because then it's, then it's easy to pass them from one grade level to the next to the next without they ever meeting any basic competency. You got to hold them responsible and you'll be able to hold teachers responsible that this is what they're going to have to master in this particular grade level. Then we took the testing and instead of looking where the students were when the teacher got them at the beginning of the year and where they ended up, no, we just tested to see if they were on grade level. And even if the teacher were able to move them to grade levels, if they were not on that grade level, the teacher was looked at as a failure. So it is a way that we are analyzing the data. And then we went on and we said, from the superintendent's office, you wonder yet, so this thing for you. From the superintendent's office, that every school, every school on St. Croix must do the same thing at the same time, at the same day. How? Anybody that teach know that every class that you have is different. And that you have to tailor your instruction to that particular class that you're teaching. But when you're going to say that on a Wednesday, I expect every single school, second grade, to be covering this particular topic, that is wrong. And then we went that we had the new way that you write lesson plans. And we get so technologically savvy that teachers could just cut and paste and plug it in and send it. And the plans are beautiful, but the plans are not from the teacher themselves. So the old way, when they then have all the technology, you have to sit in the night and develop your lesson plan as to how you're going to get that concept across. But now you open a textbook and the textbook, the teacher's edition say, this is what you should begin the lesson with. We have to go back to truly teaching. And we took the love and the fun out of teaching when we mandated that teachers have to do X, Y and Z every single day. So a teacher that was being creative can no longer be creative because they have to cover the material that day or they're gonna get in trouble. So they could no longer cut and paste and draw and color and make sure that those students understand that particular subject area. And whether or not Paul L. Johnny called the material, keep it going, keep it going, keep it going, keep it going. And that is where we have lost. And the system have driven the best teachers out. And I just read a report where on the US mainland, they said that more than ever, first-year teachers are resigning. We must design a system in the Virgin Islands as to how we're going to be able to retain our teachers and how we're going to be able to make sure that our students cover basic competencies. And with that, I am an advocate for site-based management. I believe that every school needs to look at their population and design their program to meet the population that they have. All the after-school programs, everything. Complex ban program was built on our ability to utilize federal funds how we wanted to utilize it. The weight room, because we could utilize federal funds how we wanted to utilize it. But after that, it came down from the superintendent's office that we will tell you how to use your funds. We will buy reading program for every student, whether or not they're advanced readers or low readers. We can buy reading programs for all of them. And at some point, we have to be able to put the feedback in our administrators, hold them responsible and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. And where to end on this note, we talked about this vocational and technical. I looked at the data at the certification ceremony that just took place at the vocational school. Four students in welding from the entire island of St. Croix. Because the program serves Central High and any private or parochial school could sign up in the vocational program. Four students. But you have students, when they enroll in a vocational course and the first two weeks, they have to do a little bit of what might be considered hard work or go in the sun. The parents come and take them out the next week. I don't want my son in that program. He's complaining about his son. I don't want my child to do this. I don't. We have to seriously look at this education picture totally different. And does the vocational school need work? It need a tremendous amount of work. Because I've always advocated that we should have had a course down there that train those children how to drive heavy equipment. We should have carpentry, it's closed. We should have masonry, it's closed. But when we're looking at how we're going to hire those teachers, we continue with the same cookie cutter approach. We must adhere to the union policy, union contract. And if they don't come in under the $40,000, we're not hiring them. But we're not looking at even bringing them on as period teachers, having them teach in the morning, go in the afternoon. We have stopped our school to work component. That is what is killing us. And I'm going to end also, you could talk about something, the one thing, they have changed the schedule. A lot of parents are upset about the scheduling in reference to the report time for elementary and secondary, et cetera. Because secondary children usually take care of the young ones. But now secondary going to school at seven thirty and the young ones going to school at eight thirty. So there's a a huge complaint about, I have to work at eight o'clock. Who is going to get my child to school? Am I gonna go to work late, et cetera? But having the secondary start at seven thirty has changed the schedule that the secondary schools are now going to have first, second, and third period. And I checked, that's how it's configured, and then lunch and then fourth period. But the old schedule was first, second, lunch, and then third and fourth. So if you were in a vocational track, a vocational track, you could go to your school to work after lunch. But now you can't have a school to work because third period is before lunch. So you can't send the children out to go to a vocational um school to work, come back for lunch and then go back. So what they have done is they've moved all of the vocational classes to the morning for second and third period. That is going to destroy the ability of our students to go into the community and have school-to-work experiences, first of all. Second of all, you're going to have some teachers that's going to be teaching for four and a half hours straight. They're going to be burnt. So you you're creating a next issue because you teach an hour and a half, you've got five minutes, the next hour and a half, the next. They're gonna be teaching for four and a half hours straight. So I am really requesting and and I have had the discussion with the superintendent, Mr. McGregor, that he revisit the schedule and that we go back to having third and fourth after lunch and that the schedule for the reporting time of children in the morning, that that is revisited. Later on, I will begin to speak about the K to eight, which I'm a supporter of.
Good evening. I'm not sure how you follow that. I know I'm not as eloquent as our good senator. My name is Victor Sum the Third and I serve as the deputy superintendent for the St. Croix district. Regrettably, our superintendent, Mr. Carlos McGregor, could not be here this evening because he's off island at a JAG conference, Jobs for American graduate, so he sent me instead. I want to start with thanking Ms. Morehead for creating this opportunity for the public to come out and share with the panelists and the panelists as well to share your thoughts and your concerns about the state of education in the Virgin Islands with particular concern for what's going on on St. Croix. And I want to share with you something that I found that was shared with me from Marie Encarnacion, our assistant commissioner. And it's just a paragraph, so bear with me, from called Think Strategic White Paper 2017. And it begins, we've been talking about 21st century skills, 21st century learning, and 21st century schools for twenty years now. Almost two decades into the 21st century. And many schools around the world and including the Virgin Islands are still set up to cater for 19th and 20th century learners. Let that sink in for a minute. We're talking about 21st century skills, 21st century learning, and 21st century schools. But our approach to education, not only in the Virgin Islands but worldwide, is still settled in the 19th and 20th century. And that says a lot because we're dealing with students who, the senator, the good senator said, are microwave learners. They think fast, they know more about social media and about the internet, and they're global than those of us that teach them are. I I want to talk briefly because I know there's concern and there are questions that are going to come. And I I want to talk briefly about the fact that after twenty-nine years as a public servant, of which twenty-one has been in education alone, and I started out as a teacher, education, as you all know, is not easy. And of my twenty-one years, I spent perhaps the most precious time in education working with what some would call marginalized students, what some would say are at-risk students due to mental deficiencies, substance abuse, dropout prevention. And I came to love working in that population because I saw the hope. And I stayed in alternative education because I realized that that population truly represented the future of the Virgin Islands and they needed to be given a chance again and again and again. And that's not only students from the alternative education program, but throughout the district. And I want to talk about the fact that as we shape and fashion education for the future, we can't do the same things. I tell my daughter, we have a mentality in the Virgin Islands and especially in St. Croix where we'll plant potato and a couple of weeks later, we're surprised that it's not a tomato. And one of the things that needs to happen is we need to understand that what may have worked then may not work now. And so as we came on board as a new administration into the Department of Education, we took a long, hard look at how the department on St. Croix was operating. And we realized that we couldn't continue to plant potato and then in a few weeks, a few months, expect to get tomato. So a part of leadership is making very hard decisions and trying to influence the minds of others that whatever decision you make ultimately is in the best interest of your stakeholders and obviously our primary stakeholders are our students. So as a result of those hard decisions, we ended up closing the Elena Christian Junior High School, which had to relocate from the Charles H. Emmanuel site to the Manor School location in Estate Princess. As a result of plethora of environmental issues, we ended up closing the Alexander Henderson School and ultimately merging it with the Arthur Richards School. And we found that we needed to go further. We found in our research, we found in our review of data that the student population in the Virgin Islands and in St. Croix, especially after the storm, continued to decline. We found that we were losing teachers. And not only were we losing teachers, we saw that this was a national phenomenon. We saw that this was an issue throughout the Caribbean and not just in the Virgin Islands. We realized that we were working in facilities and structures that for the most part were aged and dilapidated. We even have one school building that was built in eighteen forty-one that continues to be used as a school structure with instruction going on. And and given the projection for declining student enrollment, the national and local teacher shortage, and the dismal state of our educational facilities, the district with support of the administration decided to move to a K through H structure. And we felt that the K through H structure was a step, was a necessary step in the right direction. We, as a result of that, created created four K through H schools. The Probie Larson School, the Juanita Gardine School, the Yulali Rivera School, and now the Arthur Richards School, and all four of them are K through Hs. We looked at the research very carefully and we felt that as we looked at the research, as we examined the research, to include, for example, the Julia Sproul School in St. John that has always been a K through H school, that this is something that would work. It would cut down on the amount of transitions our students have to make. Currently, our students enter at kindergarten, they exit at sixth grade, they spend two years in junior high school, they exit at eighth grade, and then they proceed on to senior high school for nine through twelve. That's a lot of transition. And we needed a field, if you will, we needed an environment where students could continue to get the nurturing that our elementary schools are known for. The dedication and the passion for education that our elementary teachers are known for. We needed to continue that. We needed to cut down on the amount of transitions that our students have to reduce the stress that transition from six to seven and eight to nine creates. And it is not perfect. The Department of Education has issues. We're not going to hide that. And what we're asking is for cooperation, input, and understanding. So I, for one, I'm very happy and pleased to be here. I'm looking forward to dialogue and input. And we are, we stand ready to share with you what our plans are for the department moving forward on St. Croix. Thank you very much. Okay, before we move to questions from the audience, I want to take this opportunity to recognize a very special educator who just recently joined us. We got news yesterday that one of our teachers received a very distinguished recognition. Mr. Joseph Bess. Would you please stand? He was nationally recognized as the territory's first Achieve Three Thousand Pro Educator. Mr. Bess is a central high school teacher. He teaches eleven and twelfth grade AP English. And he's been recognized nationally as the Achieve Three Thousand Pro Educator. He's the first in the territory. It's a literacy instruction platform. And with the majority of fourth and eighth graders across the U.S. falling below proficient levels in the reading of the NAP assessment, Achieve Three Thousand is a is a way to help improve literacy amongst students. And Mr. Bess apparently has done a very good job in moving his his students to where where they should be. Mr. Bess began teaching at Central High in twenty seventeen. And he got his start with Achieve Three Thousand in two thousand eleven when he was teaching in Washington, D.C. He has him, he the, he tracks the Lexile scores of students in terms of reading comprehension and and they're given the opportunity to read and different different articles. And he incorporates technology in his classroom. And as a result, we see his students making tremendous gains. He is currently introducing rising ninth graders enrolled in Central's Summer Bridge Program to the Achieve Three Thousand platform. And he encourages his his fellow high school English language, arts, science, and biology to use it regularly in order to see its benefits. Again, please give a round of applause to Mr. Joseph Bess. Okay. Now we we're going to allow the audience to raise questions.
Um, we have Ferreras, who's Ferreras? It's just that we'll call the ones who have signed for us to come. Come.
Okay, I'll ask that when you're about to pose a question, please indicate to whom the question is directed. If you have a a special individual you would like to respond to your question.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Soraya. My first question is for Mr. Samuel. So you stated that there has been a stress on schools from having the transition from sixth grade into the junior high and from the junior high into the high school. So you decided to do the K to eight schools, right? So why is it that you haven't did the development in all schools? Because there are still schools that has K to sixth, Woodson is still open from seven to eighth. So why isn't the development hasn't been made for that all schools to do K to eight and then you transition straight into the high schools?
Thank you. That's a very good question. The name is Som, not Samuel. But that's okay. So as we looked at our buildings in particular and their capacities, one of the things we saw, let's take Lumoco School. We had an opportunity to go out to almost all of our elementary schools, suffice it, no, we did go to all of our elementary schools. And what we found is that they want to become K through eight. The issue for a school like Lumoco and Claudio Marco is there's space limitations. We just had to close a building at Lumoco, the J Building, because of a structural collapse. And that's a building we'll be working on. That building, I believe, has in four to six classrooms. So the same thing at Ricardo, Ricardo is one of our most popular schools, it's a blue ribbon school. It's bursting at the seams and it can't physically accommodate K through eight. Claudio Marco is another school. It has two wings that were damaged by Hurricane Maria. We are beginning work on repairing the six hundred wing at Claudio Marco sometime this summer. And it is our hope that after those two wings are repaired at the Claudio Marco School, it will become our fifth K through eight. So in a sense, we do hope that at some point, those schools who are remaining as K through six will become K through eight. But for the meantime, because of space limitations and structural difficulties, we cannot move those four elementary schools that are K six, we can't move them to K eight at this time.
Thank you. So my other question is that, so you said that you guys had, it was a really hard decision to come up with doing the K to eight schools. So why before the decisions were made, why weren't parents actually involved in the process of developing the K to eight schools?
That's a very good question. That's a, that's a really good question. And you're right that the involvement of parents came afterwards as we visited elementary schools. And that is something that we have learned to involve our to involve our stakeholders upfront and not at the end of the process. Despite the fact that the decision was made before we had the involvement of the stakeholders, even after the decision was made and we visited the majority, if not all of our K eight schools and our junior high school, there was tremendous support from parents as a result of this move. A lot of parents applauded the fact that they didn't have to worry about their precious little sixth grader now going into a completely different environment in junior high school, that if they had more than one child, that that family could stay at that school for K through eight grade. And so we know moving forward that we will be involving all of our stakeholders to come to better decisions for this district.
Thank you. And my last question is for Mistress Butler. You stated about going to school in the morning and then in the afternoons having a technical or job or something to do in the afternoons than just not only going to school. So what would happen to students who does not want to be involved in any technical activity or recreational activity in the afternoons? What would they be doing if they're not doing anything?
I think that is the student that needs to be, have the most important role. If there is a student that doesn't have any desire to do anything, then we need to find out why, okay? Every child, if you're giving them the opportunities and a vast amount of different things, I believe that any child will find one thing. believe that any child will find one thing that they like. Now, we're trying to take our children and stick them in a box and make them do all the same things. And I agree with some of our panelists that this is not really what we can do anymore. You know, it may have worked in the fifties and the eighties, but now these kids are smarter than we are, and we need to recognize that and give them things that will keep them in the afternoon doing something that they want to do, not something that we tell them they should do. So I think it's up to us to establish more like technical programs to say, you know what, you may not have known you wanted to weld, but this week, you're going to learn how to weld. And you may say like, well, that was the coolest thing. I think I could change this into art. Okay, but you would have never known that unless you tried to weld. So that's what I'm offering in the afternoons or some of these kids that don't really know what they want to do. It's up to us to figure out what they should do, because they can't do nothing.
Thank you.
Gerard Emanuel. And when Mr. Emanuel is coming, I just want to recognize two board members in the audience. We have Ms. Winona Hendricks here in the back and Mr. Terrence Joseph here, members of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Good evening, panelists and audience. Let's give these panelists a round of applause for coming out and taking their time to answer our questions and present their views. I want to be very brief. What is being done to expand and enhance the ability of the schools to utilize and have reliable, high-speed internet? And the reason why I say that is because these students are going to be expected to compete with everyone else who has it in the United States and elsewhere in the world. And I understand, Mr. Som, if I'm not wrong, students had to be taken smarter balance tests and some of these standardized tests by using a pencil and a paper? When they're supposed to be doing it using the internet? Is that really a fact?
Yes. Our students for the beginning of this school year did have to do, not all schools, but some of our schools had to do the smarter balance via paper and pen. It is our hope that by the time we do the spring assessment, that all schools will be up and right, on running internet. And I will tell you, Mr. Emanuel, thank you for your question. It vexes us to no end that in this day and age, internet in our system is not reliable. All schools and all activity centers in the department have internet. It is not reliable internet, but we are busting our tails to learn why and to make sure that it becomes reliable and it is high, high speed. The department has ordered and has on island now two Wi-Fi vehicles. You'll see them going around one of, they're having the labeling done to identify them as Wi-Fi vehicles. We're also getting a Wi-Fi bus laboratory that will be in our housing communities so that students who can't afford computers can go to the bus at specific times in the afternoon and early evenings and use the equipment on that bus to complete assignments that are internet-based. So it is something that is definitely a priority. It is on our radar to make sure that internet services in all of our schools and activity centers is reliable and high speed.
Thank you, because we just want to read your program with a prominent businessman. And he said, one of the things he's really looking for now, and I'm sure the person from the Chamber of Commerce can account to this, is it looking for students who are computer literate? That's one of the first things. And also able to do basic math. He said that when they were looking at forms that students were filling out, they couldn't believe it. Students couldn't fill out a basic application form correctly. And so how could they get a job doing more technical things? So I hope there's a lot to be done, but I want to thank you all again for coming out. And I want to say that parents, I see a lot, who are parents in here with public school students? Well, grandparents too. You see, we blame the department, we blame the senators, we blame everybody else, but I agree with the lady for the PTA. The parents are the ones who can hold senators accountable. The parents are the ones who can hold the department accountable. Y'all don't have any need to be held accountable if the persons whose children are supposed to be benefiting from this system don't take part. But I understand that it's difficult for some parents because they have to work. Some of them are single parents, they have no babysitting facilities. But I'd like to ask this young lady from UVI, who I respect very highly and know her very well. Does, does UVI have a program where it provides babysitting services or childcare services for persons like mothers who want to attend class in the night but have no one to take care of the children? Thank you.
This is correct. This is something that the institution is currently implementing. I believe they've already found their locations on both the St. Thomas and St. Croix campus. They've already begun developing painting and stocking or equipping the one in St. Thomas, and they're still working on the one on St. Croix. But it is a plan that they're currently working on implementing. It, they do have their spaces and they're currently developing those, but it is something that the institution will have available for potential students and current students very soon.
The Center at St. Croix is going to be open August of this year, the Childcare Center for Students Attending the University of Virgin Islands St. Croix Campus. The Center at St. Thomas opened about a week and a half ago.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Foy. I'm a rising sophomore honors international business major and Spanish minor at Howard University, and I grew up right here in St. Croix, as Virgin Islands. So I have two parts of what I came on this mic to do. First, I'm going to ask questions, and then I'm going to speak from the perspective of a youth at this panel, listening to y'all speak about the future of our education. So first off, I recognize that if any of you have covered it, it was passed over because I didn't hear it. I don't hear anything about the integration of VI history being improved in our education system, and I wanted to know what is being done to improve how VI history is being taught to the students in our education system. Any other panelists can answer.
Let me begin, and then I'll pass the mic to Education. But one of the issues we had or we have is the fact that we really don't have a lot of written documentation or written material that allows for teachers to be able to pass on the history of the Virgin Islands. And there was a project in which Dr. Lawson was one of the individuals leading the project in which he was creating a text and, Peggy, I don't like this, but creating text along with a workbook for students from K to eight. And the first phase was completed and the second phase was never completed because of a lack of monies. In the last fiscal budget, I appropriated some $300,000 for the Department of Education to be able to complete or continue the progress with that particular project. And I just met with him recently, and we're going to give the next phase of those monies so that within a short period of time, hopefully by next school year, we'll have a text along with a workbook that is teacher-friendly, student-friendly for students from kinder to eighth grade.
Thank you for that question, Crystal. I'm speaking personally now because I am a former Virgin Islands history teacher at the John H. Wilson Junior High School, and I found that we need to do a better job of teaching Virgin Islands history. And Virgin Islands history is something that should not be limited to a classroom. Virgin Islands history is all around us. And when we talk about Virgin Islands history, we need to look at Virgin Islands history and teach Virgin Islands history from an experiential standpoint. We need to get out there. We need to go to our historical sites, whether it be Salt River, whether it be into our cemeteries that are just filled with historical data and information. We should not just be comfortable sitting back despite the fact that we don't have all of the literature and textbooks that we need to teach Virgin Islands history. We should not be comfortable just teaching history, VI history in particular, from a classroom. We need to go out and meet with our cultural bearers, with our seniors who are still alive, and do recordings. We did that at Woodson. We interviewed Juanita Gardine, we interviewed several others, and we created a book. Nevertheless, it's not very popular, but we created a book where we interviewed people whose names are on public places, public faces. And so we need to look at a different approach. We need to augment textbook instruction for Virgin Islands history and get out in the field with our students and make Virgin Islands history a living history for our students.
My next question is for the last gentleman that spoke. So you mentioned that the reason for the K to eight merger was due to the fact that it was felt that there was tension on the children when transitioning to new schools. But my question to you is, which children did you speak to about this tension? Because as far as I know, when I was growing up as a child, I looked forward to my sixth grade promotion, I looked forward to my eighth grade promotion, and I looked forward to my twelfth grade promotion, because as far as I was concerned, it was me being praised for my achievements in that chapter of my life and acknowledging that I was moving on to another chapter. So I want to know how many children told you that they felt stress or tension from these promotions?
Let me just add to your comment. That was just but one factor. We looked at, again, declining enrollment in the district. We looked at the fact that there was a national and a local shortage of teachers nationwide and in the Virgin Islands. We also examined the fact that our buildings are aged and in constant need of repair. So those were the primary factors that drove the decision to move through a K eight. As a former school administrator at the Alternative Education Program that went from grade six through twelve, I saw it. I saw it there for thirteen, the anxiety of moving from sixth grade to seventh grade, the anxiety of moving from eighth grade to high school. Elementary school is completely different in its setup and its approach than junior high school and high school is. So it's there.
I wanted to add one thing that I don't think the, Mr. Som is saying, if you look at the promotion retention rate for kinder to eight, to twelfth grade, you look at the rate for every grade level, the highest retention is grade seven and grade nine, by far, by far. So that was, that is one of the factors why there is a push to move to a K to eight system because there's only one transition, which is from grade eight to nine. And when I went to Arthur Richards, the failure rate for grade seven, the promotion rate for seventh grade were like sixty percent. So forty percent of the students, four out of ten were failing grade seven. So if you stay with a traditional system, you have to create a lot of support in grade seven and grade nine, and that is why a lot of schools now have nine-grade academy or they have a specialized program for grade nine because the failure rate is the highest. Once you get them out of nine and you get them to eleven, twelve, you're good. Retention decreases dramatically. So hopefully, this would be a way to decrease the retention rate for that particular grade level. And then some studies are saying if they stay in a school for kinder to eight, they're more mentally prepared to make the transition when nine grade hit because it's not two transitions. So that's one, that's just one of the areas. I'm going to finish now. The drawback is, and I was telling Mr. Som, Mr. McGregor, the problem with going to multiple K to eights, when you have, when you go five, six, seven, eight, is that you then begin to impact music, art, and pre-vogue. Because we already have a problem with hiring music, art, and pre-vogue teacher for the junior high schools, the three junior high schools that we have. So when you move to five with our inability to hire music teachers, et cetera, we might have some issues there. So that is one of the areas that I've discussed with the superintendent officer, we need to look at, so how are we going to be able to teach business, home economics, all of those other subjects when we're expanding the number of schools that we presently have for K to eight?
So my response is for the first gentleman's response to my question in terms of how the decision is made and how you stated that y'all knew from observing the students and you knew as a superior and you knew. This is why a lot of youth don't feel the need to speak because decisions are made for us without us ever giving input into the decision. Adults and superiors and persons in positions feel like they know so much about what's going on in youth's life and what is best for us without ever communicating with us or asking what is going on in our life or asking what we see our future or asking how we really feel about something. Someone standing here seeing me speak right now would say she's a confident person and she knows exactly what she wants to say, when in reality, I can still shake, my hands still shake when I do public speaking, but no one can tell. So you saying that you can observe students and know that they were under stress and tension when it came time to promote, that could be excitement, that could be them being very intuitive on what's the next step, even though it may look like they're afraid, it really could be the storm before the calm, even though that's switched, sometimes that's what it is. I know as me, as a child switching schools, I was afraid up until the day I got to school. And the day I got to school, I was so excited to know I was starting in a new place. So I feel like this is the root of a lot of problems when it comes to making decisions about education. You're making decisions for my future, for people younger than me future, and you're not asking them any questions about what they want their future to look like. Also, that is also why even today, though I begged so many of my peers to come and see what y'all was talking about, maybe give some suggestions, they said they already going to make decisions without listening to us, that the superiors already have decisions made about what they believe is best for youth without ever talking to youth. The same way census are taken, the same way questions are asked to adults, the same way questionnaires are given out to ask adults their opinions on things. You can go to schools and give students questions. Ask who, how many of you are interested in welding? How many of you are interested in nursing? Have them take a survey to see what kind of career path students are interested in. Asking little kids what they're interested in. What's your favorite class? Art? Is your favorite class English, math? So you know where the interest lies in young students. It's really not that difficult to collect information from young students because they know what they want. Furthermore, on the topic of VI history, I feel like not enough is being done to push VI history, and I feel like it's being just kind of passed over and referenced of yes, we're trying to get it more, and yes, we don't have the materials, and yes, we wish we could push VI history. But it's very simple to get VI history to go back into the schools. We have people like Bradley Christian, Stanley Jacobs, Pastor Darby, people in our community that youth myself see all the time that know a lot about VI history and would love to integrate into curriculum. Teaching students how to dance quadrille, do maple dancing, having steel pan integrated into our music lessons, that's not very difficult to accomplish as long as y'all really push for it. The same way we push for things like disciplining the students and making sure the students know their place, you can also let them know their place in knowing where you come from, what your culture is, what are the traditions of the VI. So I really feel like when we're talking about education, if we're not talking about VI history, then I don't feel like you really care about the youth's future because you're not teaching them about their past. And if they don't know where they come from, they're not going to know where they're going. And before I sit down, my next comment is, and I feel like the lady from Commerce can relate, I feel like we need to make it clear to students what are career paths that they can have for different qualifications. Having someone know what kind of careers are applicable for someone that's good at math is important. Having someone know what careers are applicable for someone good at English is important. Having them know what actual career paths are applicable for themselves is really important because you can't aim for something you don't know exists. Before, I was exposed to going to the States and having opportunities to see people actually doing jobs and actually being able to talk to them in person, I never knew what consulting was. I never knew what companies like McKinsey and Company was. I never knew what Pfizer was, what exactly they do. Having students know what different companies do, what different career paths are, is very important because then they know what to aim for. Having them know what are the real wages they should be offered out of college, out of high school, having them know the difference between your qualification out of high school versus associate's degree, bachelor's degree, master's degree, PhD, having them know what kind of career paths those open up for you. I feel like letting them know from a young age is important because even though I had the opportunity to go and experience things in the States, I still don't feel like I ever knew anything until I got to college. And I feel like that shows that the education system hasn't done enough to prepare students. I shouldn't have to reach to college to understand exactly what career I want. Having to just know what major you want isn't enough because if you go to school to learn something and you have no idea where it applies, you have wasted time and energy because you might be miserable in the careers offered to you. So I really feel like classes that show you what careers are applicable for your skill set is really important. Thank you.
Shannon Richards?
Shannon Richards?
Good evening. I've heard a lot from the panelists tonight. But what I'm not hearing as we talk about education, I'm not hearing about the services for students with special needs. And I really believe that students with special needs, whether they have dyslexia, dysgraphia, or any of the other learning challenges that keep them from performing at their best, the students and their parents are being marginalized. So we're hearing a lot about, you know, K through eight, and that's, and that's great. I am a big believer in the public school system, but I don't believe that the public school system is treating all of its students fairly and equally. So if we're not talking about the students with special needs and if we're not finding ways to serve them, whether it means making that commitment to get the resources that they need, then we're not doing the best for all of our students. So talking about parity and equality is simply talk if we're not giving all of our students the resources that they need to thrive. Our special, it takes too long to get an IEP. I have heard of parents complaining that it takes months, it could take up to a year. And in that time, their students are falling further and further and further behind. When we talk about summer, if we're not offering services for our students with special needs in the summer, we are losing learning. So when school starts again, where are these students going to be? Because we haven't provided, I won't even say basic services, needed services. So as we continue to have these conversations about, about education, let's not forget our students who have special needs. And every student who has a learning disability or simply needs learning support is not an autistic child. It's not a child that may, that may appear to be, you know, special or need, or need extra services. Some of these students that are struggling are right, you know, right below our noses. They're the kids who are acting out in class because they can't read the words on the class, on the board. Okay? So if we're not, if we're not really seeing, looking at what's happening with this child and doing the IEP, doing the testing, doing the counseling, offering the resources to meet these needs that we are failing, that we're failing students. And because we have, and I, and I think part of it is that we've decided that students with special needs are only going to go so far. And none of us has the right to decide how far any child can go. And my second question and also a comment, more of a comment, is that when we talk about vocational programs and we talk about encouraging creativity and innovation and entrepreneurial spirit and everything like that. My son is a public school graduate, I'm a public school graduate. But too many times I have seen students who are performing at high levels staring away from vocational programs. And it doesn't make any sense. It's not an either/or. Why can't there be both? So as we talk about how we're going to encourage creativity, encourage innovation, and build our plumbers and our mechanics and our carpenters and build our entrepreneurs, let's include everybody in the conversation and not just cherry pick who should be in that conversation. Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Richards, just to address your concerns about students with IEP or special needs students. Currently, there is a summer program taking place at the St. Croix Central High School for our SIE students. And we are providing transportation to and from as well as lunch. With respect to IEPs, I will admit that it has been a problem to get IEPs or EDC testing done. It takes too long. And to that extent, we have decided as a district to continue testing through the summer. Normally, testing finishes at the end of the school year. As we sit here, we are testing during the summer to get those evaluations completed and so that we can move forward with staffings for the beginning of the school year.
So what's the average length of time now that it takes?
I saw Mr. Moorhead earlier from Woodson Junior High School. And honestly, we have had up to two years just of testing to get done because there was not sufficient staffing to do the testing. And we're working on contracting school psychologists and school social workers to get the testing done. It should not take that long amount of time. It's a crime to have students waiting and parents waiting for testing to be done.
And it is, and it is a crime. And I've sat in meetings and asked how many complaints have been made about special education? And the state office says none. And I find that baffling because everyone should be complaining. And the fact that, that parents don't feel that they have a voice when their children are getting crappy service is despicable. So two years is, is a shame. And for that child that has lost two years, and I know that many parents, especially those parents that have health insurance, go to outside providers. But what about that parent who can barely make ends meet? What services are available to them? And I think we tend to look at what's being done through the lens of people with privilege and the people who don't have privilege are the ones who are left to suffer. So two years, I would hope that next year you can say three months. But it's been too long that we've been hearing it takes years to get an IEP done. These are the students that are at risk for dropping out. These are students that are at risk to get into the school-to-prison pipeline all because somebody doesn't think it's a priority because their minds are already made up about how far that child can go.
And that's why, that is exactly why the department has committed to continuing EDC evaluations through the summer. We're not taking a summer break. We are testing now to catch up on the backlog. We are hiring school psychologists and school social workers despite the fact that compared to state-sized salaries, they're not attractive here, but we're still reaching out. We're contracting out to get this testing done because we can no longer suffer this for our students. And my last point is, the state office is planning teacher training for all of our general education teachers so they are familiar with what disabilities are. They can look for the signs of disabilities. But more importantly, all Janet teachers need to be able to make accommodations for our special needs students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, good evening. And thanks for coming to the panelists. My understanding for coming here today is to give suggestions on how we can improve our educational product. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm hearing people talking like politicians up here and saying what we're doing now. And we already understand that currently our educational product is lacking and we need a whole lot of improvement. One of the things that got me to come along here to speak today is in listening to what Mr. Vila said about Cuba. When he said that Cuba produces the most educated population where it is in the Caribbean or the world, one of them. And they have less than we have, but they have a population that is committed to education. And not only that, a system that produces educated individuals that they can export their education globally. Because we have seen Cubans in the revolutionary struggle, whether it is fighting combat for the revolutionaries around the world. We have seen Cubans export their education to Grenada and different parts of the world. Mike and Son is here in the Virgin Islands. Why can't we either send a delegation of high-ranking educators or high-ranking people in education to spend six months, three months in Cuba and follow or take away some good from that, that system and bring it here and try to, if not duplicate it, make it work in our society because they're producing. So we should, well, it don't have to be Cuba alone, but it could be any place that has a successful educational product that is helping their, their society to be educated. Because one of the things we do see in the, in the learning environment is that our young people coming up, as was said, they are not interested in education. And it ain't just because a teacher is standing up in front of them, they're not interested. They're not interested from the socioeconomic conditions and reality that they live in that is not teaching them the value of education. The reason I'm saying this is because when I, I study history and I want to emphasize the importance of VI history in the classroom or a history period about our people in the classroom. When I study, for example, about Negro, Negro schools back in the, in the time when we, our people in, in America came out of oppression and slavery, when white people did not want to educate black people, we had to develop an educational system where black people taught black people because we were excluded from the institutions of America. And in those type of learning environment, we produce great people like the Tagwell Marshals, the Martin Luther Kings, the people them who were political activists. So we need to again go back to that type of understanding for our educational product that we are producing individuals that are politically science, that have the ability to go to take courses in our educational system, that have strong emphasis on political science. One of the reasons I'm saying that is because again, maybe they could be a senator, a future senator or a future governor. But if you don't have political science as a course throughout the educational K to, K to 12 and only look to take it up at the, at the university level, again, you, 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 you're not allowing those students to be active in our community. And that's one of the things we see right now. We don't see the activism because our students are not trained, are not being trained for political activism and political organizations and the role and responsibility of taking up whether it's civil rights or human rights from one generation to the next. So I'm gonna repeat certain things, but I do want to see. And, and I'm hearing this thing, Mr. Sum's about K to eight. And I understand the population decline, the teacher decline. But we should not just be thinking about the now. We should be thinking about projecting for the future. I, I want to project for a future when we got a full population, a full population of teachers. And what we're gonna do with our educational system for that? Because culture decreased, culture increased. We should be trying to, if we're, our population is low and our teaching force is low, try to recruit students from disadvantaged communities around the world and bring them here so that we could educate them. This is what people do around the world. This is one example where the Cubans do. I want to see courses in our educational system that directly teaches our society about building the family. Went from K to 12, the importance of family, father, mother, and siblings. We have lost this as a result of our oppression and exploitation under white supremacy. So we need to rebuild that again so that our parental involvement could be better and more responsible. We need to teach family as a course in our educational system so that we can bring people back to being married, raising a family and the responsibility and role and value of a family. I would like to also see our students be allowed to take courses abroad, to take courses abroad, to other facilities worldwide. England, Africa, parts of the Caribbean, America. When I say courses, I mean either during the summer that they can go and leave the Virgin Islands for a month and then, you know, take courses with other people in the world so that they could come back and make the Virgin Islands better.
Brother R, just in the summer or during the school year? Brother Q, I'm sorry.
Again, that's something we could work out, but that's the general idea that, that they, it will be a benefit if they can again join other educational institutions globally and get a benefit from that and come back and contribute to our society. Another thing, we talk about these things about students smarter than adults because they can text faster than me in my 50s or because they could open up a computer faster than me. That is a lie and we need to stop saying these things. Okay? We need to teach our, our children the digital economy and how it works now. A lot of people are making money from the digital world. And it is so far advanced with our, our population here. We don't even, we're not even training our young people them to, to do, to invent programs and stuff like that that, you know, like, you know, that, that we could benefit from or they could benefit, benefit from. We're not teaching them to design the next computer or the next unmanned aerial vehicle. This is where we need to go so that our young people them could be a part of the digital reality now in the world. Another thing, since we, since we talking about, again, education, international relations is a, is a, is a education that could benefit all of us. And this is coupling with the political science. We need to teach our children to become ambassadors, not just the former ambassadors we have. And we like to brag about how much of them we had. But we need to actually have courses, not just in the university, but from the junior high and high school. Teaching them, again, have, have debates, societies that they can debate the current issue so that they could get a foundation to be a politician or a governor or an international thinker. And, and we need to involve these kind of techniques for our young people so they could come up and speak in front of a, in front of a mass and speak articulately uneducated, uneducated. I were waiting long for, and I were waiting long, you know. I wanna go about two more things. Yeah, man, I were waiting long, man. Competitive sports, okay? I am now watching Serena competing in Wimbledon. And I keep saying, how come we cannot get a Serena to represent the Virgin Islands? Because we don't have the sporting industry here in the Virgin Islands that allows our children to be professionals and make money from that profession. I, I, every, every summer I see the little, the World Little League in the United States of America and not a Virgin Island team in the league. Our young people are crying out for, for the ability to go through more than one door. Not just the academic door where they learn reading and writing and arithmetic. They need the vocational, they need the sports industry so that they can get scholarships so that they can make a profession from these activities. And we failing in that direction and we need to plan for that for the future. And my last thing. We need an additional bus system in the Virgin Islands. This and Abramson One Monopoly Bus System need to stop. We need more bus in here because our young people walk in the street just like how the little boy get knocked down. We walk in the, walk in the street all hours and day and night. We need more bus service so that our young people could get transported around. We need more bus service so that our young people will get transported around here.
If I can just respond really briefly, I, I'm happy that Brother R brought up the bus system and I need to let Brother Q, I'm getting it wrong. I need to let you know that with the effective use of our federal dollars, I am excited and very pleased to announce that the department, for the first time in the St. Croix district, purchased fifteen brand new twenty nineteen buses that are being constructed now. We expect delivery in late October. We expect delivery in late October or early November and you will see those, those buses on the road, brandished with the VIDE logo. So we're very pleased that we are able to get this done. We already have five buses, smaller buses that are used for our special needs population. And now we're adding fifteen to create a larger fleet on St. Croix. With respect to two of your comments, you talked about, correct me if I'm wrong, you talked about exposing students to technology particularly, I don't, I don't think you said robotics, but I think that's what you mean. Right now at the Ricardo Richards School as a summer program, Dr. Ryan, our technology coordinator, is doing a summer program in coding. During the, our last school year, he did coding at the Claudio Marco School as well. So we are exposing our students to coding. The science coordinator and the math coordinator, Mrs. White and Mrs. Bonique respectively, have always worked on a summer program in Mesa and it's gone from Mesa to I believe STE at this point. So those things are happening, they're being funded under our CGA Consolidated Grant Application for Federal Funds. They're happening every summer for the most part and we are exposing our students. Do we need to have more exposure? Absolutely yes, but we are getting some exposure for them. Thank you.
Before you go, I wanted to make a quick comment on Mr. Miller's comments. I had a chance to look at the top twenty students for like six years at, at Complex. I started to study the demographics and see what they had in common. And after studying them for six, seven years, there was one core element that probably eighty percent of that top twenty students had. They came from an intact family. Came from an intact family. And if the parents were split up, the father wasn't in the, in the child life. And it's common, no matter how you spin it and look at it, it is there. It is there. We now have to try to figure out how are we going to deal with a large number of students who have lost a parent? Because you see an individual who is killed, you read the obituary and they had nine or ten children. How are we going to be able to deal with that particular student? And how do we have to change counseling and teaching to be able to deal with that particular student? And I think that the challenge that the education system now have is that that student that Ms. Richards spoke about that is come from a, perhaps a family that is not as privileged as to how are you going to design the system for that particular student? And I give a good example. When I was right down there at Arthur Richards, there was a student that acted out in his class, cursed the teacher. And the student had never exhibited that type of behavior before. So the student was sent to the main office and the teacher was upset and said, you know, I would like that student to be sent home. The student cursed me. But when questioning the student, the student mom was arrested the morning five o'clock. So that student had a lot of anger because what had taken place in their home. So if I didn't go that extra step and say, well, what took place, I would have probably just sent that child home. So administrators have a whole different role now because you could no longer make a decision based on what you think is norm. And when students are acting up, most of them acting up for a specific reason. And we go back to the IAP issue, we have mainstream all our students and place them in regular classroom and say that they must learn at the same pace as the other students. And we're not going to provide as much of the additional support that that particular teacher then, because it looked good with a federal report to say that all our students were mainstream and really? So when they reach high school, our students are dropping out in droves that have an IAP. Because they're elementary, they will stay in the classroom, they'll be on the side, but by the time they reach a teenage, to that teenage age, they're not going to be embarrassed in the classroom. And we're putting them in a regular algebra, English classroom and expecting to perform at the same level because we have moved away from having students being placed in an environment that is in their best interests. So our least restricted environment now is everybody, literally, in the same setting. And at some point, we're going to have to reevaluate exactly what we're doing with our student population. I, I looked at my emotionally disturbed class that I had at Arthur Richards, every single student in the class lost a parent or brother. So every student had some type of deep rooted issue. One even saw his parent killed. So this is the reality that we are facing now in the Virgin Islands and the public school have all of the reality. So how are we going to reconfigure the public school to meet the reality of this world that is presenting some tremendous challenge to our children because of our behavior? And I'll end on this note. We have our children, we dress them, we have the pants long on the waist, we put on a big chain on the neck, we curse them on a regular basis from two, three, four years old, your mother this, your effing this, your this or that. And then we turn them over to the kindergarten teacher and expect them to behave. A lot of what we're doing internally as a society is making education harder and harder each day. And I challenge this community to change their behavior that we have to be able to move forward. Thank you so much.
Good evening. So I came here today because I really wanted to know what does the K through eight structure look like? I'm a hundred percent behind this, but I have not seen anywhere what it looks like. What does the day look like? What are, do the uniforms look the same in kindergarten as they look in seventh grade? Is our seventh and eighth graders getting optional programs that maybe they didn't get when they were in junior high that's gonna support these twenty first century skills that we're talking about? I haven't seen or heard education start to discuss that. And so now you've got the community on board, we're supporting this, we're in. How can we support what we don't know what it's gonna look like? And if you wait until the first day at school in Agas, that's where the crazy starts, right? Like this is when people gonna start saying, you don't know what you're doing. So I'm here today because I thought that you were going to bring for me, what did they look like? What is Pearlby Larson going to look like? What is the situation going to be set up with? Are the transitions, are the seven and eighth graders gonna have the exact same schedule as elementary? What does that look like? And so that's, that's one of my questions today.
Thank you for that question. I must say that this is not new. If you go, for example, to the department's website, there's a whole description of things like uniforms, there's discussion on what the K eight schools are and how to some extent they will look. So let me, let me give you, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. The department's website is VIDE dot VI. So if you go there, you can find the page with information with K eight and things like uniforms and so forth. So for most of the K eights or all of the K eights, those principals have decided that they want a distinction between the lowerclassmen and the upperclassmen. So you will find, if I'm not mistaken, at the Juanita Garden School, for example, the seven and eighth graders will weigh, will wear a light gray shirt and I believe their bottoms are maroon if I'm not mistaken. At the Pearlby Larson School, I'm not big on uniforms, so I'm thinking off the top of my head. At the Pearlby Larson School, the lowerclassmen K through six will wear their regular uniforms, the yellow and the green, and the upperclassmen, the seven and eighth graders, will wear their white shirts and green bottoms or skirts in this case. Will they have different schedules? Yes, they will. A seventh grader will not have the same schedule as somebody in fourth grade. We've gone as far as to create, if you will, a school within a school at all of our K eight schools for seventh grader, upperclassmen. So their schedules will look very different from somebody in kinder or somebody in second grade.
I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm sorry if I gave the impression I'm talking about the schedule, I'm more talking about the curriculum, right? Like, so what does the curriculum look like now that we're in K through eight? Are we just taking the junior high curriculum and just sticking it in there and because you're in the same building, we call it a K through eight? Or have we adopted a K through eight curriculum that supports as they go along all the way until eighth grade, like a wraparound? Or is it just we blending the schools?
As a pilot for the district, they will continue with the current curriculum. What we want to do is collect data in our first year to see how it works and then make the necessary adjustments for those schools and if need be, bring on more elementary schools into the K A makeup. So for the first year, again, they'll be using the same structure with respect to curriculum so that we can collect data to see if it works and then we can make those tweaks moving forward.
Okay, and my next statement is for the lady from Congress. I totally hear everything that you're saying in regards to things that are great options. What I would like to charge you with and challenge Congress with, the Chamber of Congress with, is supporting our music and arts inside of our public school systems. We already know that our Department of Education is strapped and we also know that federal funding can't be used to support those things, but studies show, and Mr. Aviala, you're a data man, so you know, studies show the link between music and arts and success and community involvement wraparound. So.
And those are all entrepreneurial things.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I, I'd like for Chamber of Congress maybe to pick up the, I don't wanna say the gauntlet, but just a little bit, right? Pick up the slack a little bit and see how they can support these programs. And my final statement is in the after school programs that we have here. After school plays a really big part in twenty first century under direction that twenty first century is going in education. However, we're still at a place where after school is separate from in school. And I would really like to thank this year and hope this year that Department of Education opens up a space at the table to start helping after school to link and support education in a more meaningful, impactful way as we go forward building our twenty first century skills in our young people.
Just one comment on the K to eight and one of the areas that I worry about and I have spoken to Mr. McGregor is that our students that are going to eighth grade were already in a junior high. So for the one year alone, we're going to have this problem. Those eighth graders are going to be going back to the elementary school where they left. So we're going to have to do some counseling to make sure that they understand it's not a step backwards and that they are actually moving forward. So that's one component I really don't want us to leave out because you'll have a student that was at Pearlby, that went to Elena Christian for seventh grade and now going back to Pearlby. So we have to make sure that psychologically, everything is set there.
Shalita Schuster?
Good night, everyone. Okay, I wrote down some notes that I thought that was very important and my whole thing is about the fine arts programs. The fine arts programs are definitely a very weak link in the Department of Education. And I have had the opportunity this year to be working with John H. Woodson Junior High School under the fine direction of Mr. Rodney Morehead, excellent, excellent principal. And he brought me into the fine arts program to teach dance. And within that fine arts program that I've been teaching, I have helped many students change their life around. My first day was terrible. They were telling me what they're going to do. And it wasn't dance, it was, we're gonna hang out in here, turn on our phones and do what we want to do. And I had to have a conversation with Mr. Morehead and I said, I don't know what to do. And he said, take control of your class. So the next day I did that. I, I, I became Shalita Schuster, that I was in all the others, my studio and took control of the class. So when I welcomed my students into the class, it was me telling them what we're going to do. And after that welcoming that I did, we became great together and I was able to teach. Those students wanted discipline. They wanted me to tell them what to do. And they became fine dancers after that. I got to be introduced to some of the most gifted, talented young ladies in John Woodson that I never thought that I could ever, ever meet. Matter of fact, I was wondering where were these children before? Because none of them ever came to my studio because financially, they didn't have the funds to pay for classes. The fine arts program have to, it has to tune up in dance, music, and theater. The fine arts program today in the statewide, it's not only those three entities, it's also photography, videography, and anything else pertaining to media and social, what do you call it? Social media, that's fine arts too. And right now, they have competitions with other schools from junior high to high school. They have competitions that our students can go to the states and compete against and win hundreds and thousands of dollars worth of money of scholarships. That is what's happening today. I also wanted to mention about some of the stress release, relief. That is what fine arts do. It helps to stress relief that child. So when they come into that fine arts program, they know that this is one part that they don't have to use some books or write anything on a blackboard or do any of that. They can be themselves through the art, through music, through dance, through theater, through those things and become themselves and use that in a very positive direction. I also have the opportunity to work in the summer, the summer program with the fine arts program with John Woodson. But there was one thing I asked Mr. Morehead if I could do, something different. I said, could we open it to the complete public? And he said, why not? And now, we're not only teaching the students from junior high, we're teaching from elementary, all the different private sectors of schools are entering my classroom. Children that would never, ever have the opportunity to dance, I am now meeting. And these children love it. They are talented and gifted. Not only that, young lady, I know you spoke about the university, but do you know that the university now is building up their fine arts program? Because I'm a part of that. I'm a part of writing their ballet syllabus so that our students from elementary to junior high to high school can graduate with a dance degree. That is what's happening now. So we must do that. And not only does the fine arts program have to do with just being fine arts, we have to work on our lunch program because the things that those children are putting in their system in their body is what makes a fine tune dancer, musician, and an actress. Because if we're feeding them just lunch and that's healthy meals and healthy structured meals, that is, that is a main factor of some of their behavior because what's going inside their bodies is the wrong things. And so within the fine arts program, you will learn how to be a healthy eater and put healthier foods inside your system so that you can be stronger and, and your attitudes will be much different in the classroom among your teachers. That is a very, that's one big factor. One other thing that I want to mention to everyone is, first of all, with the Chamber of Commerce, I think the Chamber of Commerce needs to support the nonprofit. Because I looked up on the internet for the, for the Chamber of Commerce and the membership for non-profit is a lot higher than any other membership. And I can't understand why nonprofit is so much higher in the fees. So I would like for you to check on that and to kind of maybe have the nonprofits to just join for free because we can't afford to pay these fees. And the only way that we can be able to really work with those children or any other youth in the community is to be able to sign up and join, but the, but the Chamber of Commerce is supposed to support the non, the nonprofit organizations. One other little thing I want to bring up is that now that we're here talking together and working things out, you need more. and working things out, you need more talk shows on the radio. You need to talk more about education on the radio and what is going on, on a regular basis. I don't really care who you have talking, but just say something about, to the parents about what's going on, about what's happening on a daily basis, what if your child's exams are coming up next, what they need to study on, how they need to make, make it better for themselves, so the parents don't feel so lost and the parents don't have, they have a better connection with the community and the educational system. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Good evening. Welcome to the panel. Welcome to everybody who are here tonight. The place should have been full. My first thing is, we're talking about moving in the 21st century. That's the topic, why we're here and to get our input. I sit in there with my daughter, and I'm saying, I ain't see nobody up the vocational. We got construction going on, we got big business down in Hess, man can't build in. We cannot go forward in the 21st century without teaching our youth them skills. We continue to focus on the academic side, and we don't want to invest in the vocational side. I hear Senator Velez say that they move, that they move the vocational up, they move the high school time up in the morning. So when the people in the vocational side, the little bit that they so have, since the school, they ain't buy book in 10 years, can't go on a job in the afternoon. It killing the vocational side. It killing the young people who want to learn a trade. Because they could go take the academics in the morning and then go to work in the afternoon. So they don't care about vocational education. They need to, in the going forth, in the 21st century, they need to take vocational from under education. Split the money, because I continue to hear education say, education gain $2 million for education. How much money go to the vocational side? Nobody, never do the math. It's a shame that every year they'll go and do it. They talk about, oh, Mr. Sum, you said that we, we make the decision, and I'm sitting there, I say, who is we? Did somebody wake up in the morning, come in the office and say, this is what we gonna do? We gonna change from K to eight? And everybody else in the office saying, kumbaya? Yes, yes, before they say, wait, talk to the people, go meet the parents. We continue to go forward. We can't continue to go forward in the 21st century just doing anything with dictatorship. We have to consult the parents, the teachers. People wondering, I just heard you say that, oh, we got some bus coming. Who gonna drive these bus? What is the plan for the bus them? We continue to talk, and I'm a vocational man, I'm a sports guy. They look at people who in sports and vocational as dummy. I graduated from St. Croix Central High in 1977. The vocational side and athletics, they used to look at us like we dumb. It's still going on today. We cannot continue to go in the 21st century. Where is the young carpenters? Where is the young mason? How come we ain't got nobody up here on a panel from the, for vocational technical education? A carpenter, they representing a electrician? Where is the young electrician program for all young people? I hear Senator Velez say that they'll go and say, well, the parents will come and say, take them out. We have indoctrinated the parents' mind that vocational education in the way, everybody got to be doctor in lyre, and I love that. Because when I used to work, and I know you want to be all doctor in lyre, and you need your label chain because it's blowing, I got to screw it out, and I show up, I just hit their price. And I continue to say, we have to get away from a few people sitting in a room dictating for everybody. They have to, they have to come out and meet the people. Not because, I like to play this song when they got power and authority, not because you have power and authority. You think that your decision is the right decision, and it hey wire. Right now, I hear parents crying about this new education implementation, and they talk about moving the seniors, senior, training them up in the morning, to train them go later. And I sit there and say, wow. I guess that person ain't on the children. Because if he could convince his colleague to leave the young one them home while the parents got to go to work for eight o'clock, school start at 7:30, 8:30, I wonder what kind of sense is that making? Do we have only intellectual people? Because vocational people are think half the bad. Because you go, the lighting walking, it might not occur on, the tail lighting walking, we got to think half, but these educated people coming up with the detrimental conclusion for all people instead swallow it, I in charge. So Mr. Sum, I would like to know, who is the we that you talking about? I know you is part of a team. And when, when will you all call the parents out to our public forum like this and inform them, this is where we going? And as my daughter said before, we going in the 21st century. We have to consult the young people. We all, we got dead, we going over some mix of mind because we don't get screwed up from the beginning. We need to consult the young people. And I like to thank the panel again for coming out. And we have to focus in the 21st century with vocational education, getting a bulk of the money. We got to go back and tell your colleague, Mr. Foy, say, buy new equipment, find money, buy books. And as Senator Velez say, you cannot take a trade person and tie them to the salary of a teacher. Ain't gonna work. In 1987, I tell them, so we in 2019, and it can't work. So please go back and tell we, say, we have to relook at the structure of vocational education, getting instructors in. Because there is no way a licensed plumber coming to work for education for the mediocre price, a licensed electrician. We got to use common sense. We going in the 21st century, we building buildings, we building structure in the Virgin Islands, people coming in and getting the jobs, and we crying out. But all young people have not been trained or afforded the opportunity to study. They will say, oh, yeah, they just want to smoke dope. I talk to them in the street now, like, the we to go in the street and meet the young man them and ask them what they want. Thank God for the time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Foy, for those comments. I, I can't allow the audience to sit here and believe that this was a, the move to K8 was a dictatorial decision, as you suggest, sir. We looked at data, we looked at enrollment data for all of our schools, we looked at teacher recruitment data, we looked at the condition of our buildings, we looked at student data to include retention to come up to this decision. So it wasn't, we got in our room one day and decided as our leadership, this is the direction that we were going. We studied this information. And perhaps we didn't expand the field of people that we consulted with to come to decision. But again, it was a serious look at the condition of school on St. Croix. After that decision was arrived, that we went to every elementary and junior high school in the territory. So, and I'm sorry, in the district. So to say that we haven't informed parents, that is not true at all. Our largest population, I see Mr. Munoz here from Alexander Hedgeson School, we went to Alexander Hedgeson School on multiple occasions to meet with their PTA. We had an extremely, the largest turnout for PTA ever at Ula Le Rivera School when we went to, to talk about K8. So we have met with parents once the decision is made. We went to every elementary school to inform parents of the decision moving forward.
Brooks?
Good evening. My name is Brandy Brooks. I'm a reporter with the St. Croix Avies. So I am happy to see you guys here, especially education. I want to point out something that you said about planting a potato and expecting a tomato. I thought that was very fascinating because I reported a lot on issues that we're facing as a territory today, and I think many of the roots lie in education itself. If we talking about, I think one of the major issues that a lot of people argue about is whether or not, or why people from my generation, whether it be millennials or Generation Z, is not coming back to the territory. We talking about BI history and the importance and significance of teaching BI history in the schools. But I feel like when it comes to curriculum, tailoring it to the territory is more than just history. Because I went to Complex in 2013. I learned English, history, psychology, science, all from an American perspective. So we, we want to know why people not seeing the value of the territory, but there's so many, I was at Woodson, Laverne Jones, one of the most seasoned Olympians came to Woodson to talk to the students. They had no idea who she was. And these are people who want to play sports. So if they looking at LeBron James, and they looking at whoever from, from the States as idols, why would they not want to go over there and be a part of that instead of seeing the importance of what's happening here and knowing that they could do it here? So unless the curriculum shifts to include history, arts, English, science, psychology, especially economics, because people don't know economics about the territory, nobody's going to want to, to come back. And that's an issue that's going to keep recurring. Of course, they're going to want to go abroad if that's the perspective they're learning from. Also, I think, this is very taboo, I didn't hear nobody address it, but this is a subject that needs to be addressed, sexual health and sexual awareness. I had one health class my entire time here at Complex, and I had about a month worth, worth of sexual education. I have been covering a lot of stories about HIV rates, behavioral health awareness in the territory, and they all agree that the issue lies with the fact that there's no curriculum tailored to address that. And when we have a territory that's so small with such a high HIV populate rate, and also the, the rate is now going to children who are much younger, children between 13 and 24 are now being infected with chlamydia, which means that they're having sex, and not only are they having sex, they're having unsafe sex. So if you're not creating a curriculum tailored to the issues that we face specifically in the territory, then, I mean, you can't be talking to the children here and expecting them to listen without actually creating a curriculum that, that reinstills the issue, battling the issues that we're facing here as a territory. So I just wanted to say that. And as far as saying that there's no text with BI history, I have actually reported on a number of authors who wanted publicity, who've said they reached out to Department of Education to try to get their work incorporated in the curriculum. And these are amazing books because I could say that I've, I've read most of them, and I've learned more from these books than I've ever learned from my time here with two semesters worth of BI education. So if you could create maybe a comprehensive list or like a submission form where people could, you know, let you know that they have created this type of work, and could maybe, you know, you guys analyze it and see if it's something that'll fit into the curriculum, that's just something I would say that you should look into. Thank you.
Just quickly to mention something, and very, very excellent comments. We recently passed money for the implementation of civics in the school. And we passed money to be able to produce material. And in discussion with, with members of the department, it is important that with any civics textbook that we're going to purchase, that we infuse Virgin Islands political civics in that textbook. So if we, if we pass a measure and then Department of Education just buy Americanized book, then we are not really being able to accomplish a goal that we set out. So I, I know that Dr. Larson, as the social studies coordinator, have been trying to make sure that whatever civics book is going to be utilized, that there's a chapter. If they're talking about the Senate, there's a chapter on Virgin Islands Senate. If they're talking about municipal government, there's a chapter explaining historically what took place in the Virgin Islands. So as we move along, and if we go back to giving teachers the creativity to be able to teach a lesson, they could teach a particular lesson by infusing Virgin Islands history. But when you force them to utilize a set text and say you have to teach that particular textbook, then you're limiting their ability to be able to teach about the Virgin Islands. Years ago, major holidays coming up, teachers would have them do research, et cetera, on that particular holiday. But now you're just following the structure. You have to finish this, 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 and this by a particular time. And I really think we need to move away from that. I like your comments.
I just want to let the audience know that I have a sign-in for those who want to leave their name and email to be able to get communications that come out of the Department of Education and the Board of Education. Then if I have your contact information, I'll just forward you and keep you in the loop when things are going on with education. Next is Nep Kara.
Good evening. I want shift paradigm. You have a paradigm shift. Let me ask you all a question. Do you believe there are different types of education? Do you all agree? Do you believe there's miseducation? Do you all agree on that? Do you believe that somebody could be educated in a wrong way to do wrong things? And the reason I bring that up, because my common sense tells me this. If I go through a education system, but I'm trained to poison the water of the earth, I am trained to poison the air that we breathe. I am trained to poison the earth and the food that I grow in the earth and the animals that feed on the food on the earth. I am trained to poison the medicine to give people to get good health. Is that a proper education to you? I asked a question. I have to do this because, you see, we're here saying that the government is responsible for our children's education. I think different. The parents is responsible for their child education. I witnessed that myself. My children, when they did go to school, they didn't go to school till they were like 10, 11 years old. I gave them the foundation, me and my wife, we gave them the foundation of their education so they had something to build upon. And that's what's locked in here. We saying the government must educate our children and educate them properly. Let's, let's, let's listen to this. John Henry Clark, self-educated educator amongst the black people in the United States, said, not the total quote, but paraphrasing the quote, "The oppressors do not educate the oppressed people to take power and authority from them. The oppressors will educate the people in any way that they can maintain the power and will do anything to maintain that power and authority." Our, our Department of Education has a power and an authority. But let me ask you a next question. Who developed this education system? And what culture did it come from that is now the authority that we're using to educate, and I gonna say, miseducate, most of our population? Because I ask you, I ask you this question. If you're going to teach somebody to poison the hay debris, poison the water they drink, poison the earth, poison the food, and poison themselves and pay for killing themselves, because look on the, look on the TV, they advertise these pharmaceutical products, but they got these little fine print, okay? About the after effects about taking this particular medicine for this particular thing. And then we say we educated? That ain't common sense to me, in natural sense to me. Something is wrong. Shalita talked about it the other day. The foods that we feeding our children is a direct effect of their behavior. But I'm gonna go farther, and I'm gonna stop there because I don't want to perplex anybody minds tonight. But I'm gonna say this. In studying agriculture, I learned what is the downfall of a civilization. One of the things that says the downfall of a civilization... One of the things that says the downfall of a civilization is the relationship between the people in that civilization and the earth, the soil. It says that when the soil loses fertility and the plants are no longer nutritional and the animals that eat the plant are no longer nutritional, and the people that eat the animals and eat the plant that feed on the soil that's unfertile is not nutritional, you have a sick, corrupt society, and it's bound to failure. Now, tell me what's happening in our community. Right now, in the United States, we have over 350 million people. Less than 2% of that population feeds the entire nation. If something happened to that little bit of percentage of people, what's going to happen? Are we going to go into cannibalism? What's going to happen? So I am saying if we want a future education, we're going to have to start looking first, each one of us, all of us in the community. I ain't saying I owe, I inclusive. All of us are going to have to start taking a serious thought about what really is good quality education. Is it where we're going to be acknowledging and accepting a people dominating the world and saying that you could poison the entire planet and make it such a carbon footprint all over the planet that we're going to have global warming, that it's going to come to a point where we can't even live without using oxygen masks around here? Is this the kind of education we want for the future? And I'll end my paradigm shift with this. Let's have an education about solutions. Let's start with ourselves and come up with something really about sustainable education for a sustainable future. Thank you.
I applaud the panelists for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here this evening, but I have two simple comments. First, it would have been nice to have a Board of Education representative on the panel because my understanding is Board of Education sets the policies for Department of Education. Correct me if I'm wrong. Second, Department of Education under the promotion policy haven't been updated since 2003. So when are we going to be moving forward towards the 21st century in regards to our curriculum?
I am not going to duck. I asked Mr. Joseph if he wanted to address it. He said, no, I am not going to duck. The young lady is right at the Board of Education. You want to think? I must point out something that I have been saying for some time, which is that people need to, at election time, vet the candidates for the different boards properly. And I am, I am going to say that because my first term was 2013. I'm now to the end, you know, next year I have to be re-elected, but since I got on the board, I have been asking for revisiting the policies that I think haven't been evaluated since, okay, there you go. Thank you very much. But I am one, and basically, let me just put it right out there. The majority of the members are not about the purpose of the board. It's been said, all right? So when it comes time, vet the membership properly. And I have been advocating for a lot of retirees who are out there, have the time, have the knowledge, have the expertise, and I got nothing against active employees, but when your active employees take time off their job to come to the board meetings or to represent the board, aren't they taking away from services that you need in the government? And when someone's going to say, when you schedule a meeting, well, as of this moment, I'm available, but I don't know for later, you can't argue because they have a job. So basically, Ms., that's all I can say to answer your question. The promotion, retention, and I suggest, I mean, come to the meetings and put your concern on the agenda because when I speak, it's about the messenger, not the message. You want?
I, good evening. I'm just detoying what Member Mohead said.
The next person on the list is John Munius.
Good evening, good afternoon, I mean, good evening, panelists. I see some teachers out here and some parents as well. I'd have quite a wise to write while I was waiting for everybody, so excuse me on this one here. I'm going to start by a little, something that I read from Frederick Douglass. "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." A lot of the perils that we're seeing right now in our society is because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to repair all these broken men that we went and we released out into society. It all starts with education. One of the biggest things, I'll tell you, I just recently, I guess you could call it, I repatriated back home. When I first came, I started mentioning, well, you know, you do this, you do that. Everybody was saying, well, that's the state, that's in the state, in the state. Here we go now, are we trying to do K-2A? Where'd they get it from? The state. My biggest issue with the K-2A, like I've been mentioning, you know, all the conversations that we've had, the success rate, I mean, everybody keeps trying to wrong about these, the data that you have, the data that you're going through and what's not. The data that I went through, that I collected, and not only that too, I mean, I've spoken with frat brothers, ex-alumns from my university and whatnot, who are principals, their district reps, they do everything up in the states, and they actually, I actually have one that's been going back and forth regarding a K-2A. He's actually a principal at a K-2A. One of the biggest things that they mentioned is class size. That's what makes the succession, the successful K-2A class, you know, the class sizes. Every time I picked the question about class size, they say, oh, well, according to the, what do they say, according to the teachers, the union, or whatnot, is 30 children, the max is 30 children. My car to do 120 miles, that don't mean I'm going to be driving 120 miles every day back and forth, right? So my thing is, just from seeing, and I'm speaking on behalf from Alexander Henderson because I'm the PTA president there. I have more information and I've been involved in seeing what's really going on there. And, I mean, from the beginning, from the time, from the time it took the district to finally shut down that school, that alone in itself was showing me that it seems like we know what needs to be done, but everybody just kind of grinding their gears and allowing to pacify the parents and the teachers and everybody by just giving one little hint here, oh, we'll do this, we'll do that. I don't understand why it took for, what, 12, 13, 14 people to really get sick to finally say, hey, we need to go and shut down this school. From the time, I guess, my kids, my children, them just started to that school, they went one year, and I can tell you the frustration that I had just from them going back and forth, in and out of that school, and me just doing my own research, I found out that school been being closed from since, basically from the time it opened. I spoke to Mr. Seeley, who was my principal when I went to Alexander Henderson, and he told me, from the time the tree in the front broke into the cistern, some company from our way came poured something inside the cistern that helped it mitigate it, or helped mitigate the leaking and all that stuff. But since then, the school was done sinking, so we know it was a sinking school from way back then. My frustration was, why did it take so long to do it? Now, my other big piece now is, again, I live close to Alexander Henderson, or Art Richards, or how you want to call it. From all my PTA meetings, I've been mentioning to you guys about maintenance, this, all the stuff that needs to be done. I've passed by there every single, I don't see not once, not even a blade of grass get cut there yet. What's, again, what's taking so long? That's my, that's my biggest pet peeve about how long it takes for things that we know needs to be done. We know they need to be done. Everybody's here, no needs to be done. And the biggest thing, one of the things that I'm whole, true and hard towards the district, every single one, every single one that's on the district right now, y'all were educators, whether you were principals, you were teachers or whatnot. So you guys were in the system, you guys know what is going on and what been going on. So my thing is, to me, you should be expirating, you know, exasperating as much, as much information you need or as much resources that you have to start getting these schools ready for the school year. Because like, like one of the panelists came up, mentioned, you're going to wait till two weeks before school start to go ahead and decide, okay, we're going to start doing these things. We know Alexander Henderson need covering. My children and all the children in our school, whenever there was rain, a teacher had to walk outside with an umbrella or even give plastic bags to these kids so they could go to the bathroom. Now, mind you, these are kids that came from a classroom, that there was a, there was a bathroom inside the classroom, okay? These came, like, and the teachers now have to take the time to walk the kids down the lane to take them to the bathroom. Now, how much, how much time is she taking to do that, and how much hours or how much minutes these children missing in class time for that? You know, these are things that I'm saying, you know, we all, we all know better. A lot of us are very educated, and it seems like we just either complacent or we just desensitized about what's really going on in these schools. Okay? And I really think that we need to really put the pedal to the metal and really start doing a lot of stuff immediately. We don't, we don't want to wait until it's two weeks before school start, whatever the case may be. We need to really go ahead and start hitting the road running. And that, I want to go ahead, like I said, I had a list of stuff that I wanted to follow, so I kind of came off tracking it. I'll start off with the lady from Chamber of Commerce. Do you guys have like a program or anything that you guys have a list of companies that maybe will provide work study or after-school relationships with, you know, students or teachers, you know, or even schools, even adopt schools, companies that are willing to adopt schools to provide some kind of service, or even feeling where the government don't have the money or whatever the case may be to be able to get some of these things that need to be done?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. And I'm not sure if a lot of people know this, but the St. Croix Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization. We aren't funded by anybody. All of us are volunteers, and we're, we have a list on our website of all our current business members. Now, if we were to like raise hands here, like who is entrepreneurs, there's sort of the stigma that the Chamber of Commerce isn't a local organization. But this organization was started in 1924, and basically, we just represent businesses so that way when we're talking to the government about something, there's one clear voice. So if you're a member of the chamber, or even if you just want to come to some of our Business After Hours event and network with similar people, there are some people from education that are individual members, who I know personally had come to our events, and I convinced them to be chamber members just because I wanted their expertise, because we all just volunteer to come and mix with like-minded people. I'm here tonight because my kids go to the Complex, because I'm involved in business, and because I choose to hang out with you. I could do anything I wanted to tonight, okay, but I want to be involved in our community. Your question is, is there something that we can do to help? You know, it would really help if more businesses joined the Chamber of Commerce, made us more diverse, then we could be some of the people that came in and started helping to teach some of these vocational classes. You know what I mean? I mean, there is a wealth of information in our business community, black, white, Hispanic, off-island, born here. We're a diverse organization. People don't support us, I'm not really sure why, but we have a lot to offer. And anyone who's a business member in this community should be part of our organization. And to Sharlita's point about the fees need to be less because you're a nonprofit, we're a nonprofit, and no nonprofit gives us a break, you know? The fees are set by a board director, so I don't really have anything to do with that. But the little $200 a year I pay to be a small business owner, to have the right to volunteer, to come to these things and be able to meet all of you and talk to you about what I think we can do, I think we can totally do it, but I also think that the community needs to be behind us a little bit more too, because we're just here to make sure that business gets done well.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Gutierrez, and I have been a member of the chamber for the past 10 years. With Diane Butler, I have chaired the Education Committee. So I had a very, very, very strong interest in coming here tonight when I heard about this, and I've been listening to everything that the panel has said, and I was so pleased to hear what I'm hearing from everyone because everyone has weighed into, as a business owner myself, everyone has weighed into my concerns that I've had every time I've had to recruit someone. So thank you, Mr. Viallet. Thank you, everybody, for addressing the fact that graduates even from the UVI cannot even tell me what 10% of 100,000 is when they're being interviewed. So we do need to get back to basics. But to address your question about what the chamber is doing, what we have been doing for years, as we have an education committee, and we have gone out there and we, business owners, have taken interns from the educational complex. Every year for the past 19 years, we have had an intern come in, several interns every year, and for the past two years, we have been open to having these interns come, but guess what? No one is showing up. We are making ourselves available, but no one is making themselves available to come in and participate in what we have to offer. You can ask the administrator for the complex. I've even asked, can we please get a young man to come in and learn about insurance, insurance adjusting, something like that? So it's not that we are not involved in the community. We have also had scholarships for art programs. We have donated money to art programs. We have gone into Fredericksted. We have done beautification programs. These are business owners that take time out to go and try to paint the dilapidated buildings in Fredericksted. We have donated money to art students to come and paint murals, and two weeks later, the murals disappear. So I just say this is that we just all have to come together, and we are trying to do what we can. So I hope I addressed your question. Is there something else that you, about the chamber? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
All right. My next question was for the PTSA. With all these schools that are going through the K-2A transition, is there anything the PTSA is planning to track, assist, and to engage PTAs at these different schools that are going through this to help them in the event that they're experiencing issues or they have questions? Because one of the biggest things that I've been noticing with PTAs is their attendance. I mean, when I started my PTA, I had eight people. When I finished off at the end of the year, I mean, based, of course, when the school had to be mentioned, you know, they had to be mentioned, we have one of the biggest. But I mean, as far, I probably used to have maybe 30, 30 to, maybe 30 people, max, that I used to have. But one of the things that frustrated me was that I was approached by someone who is part of the PTSA, but I never heard from you guys to say, okay, you know, especially with the issues that we were going through with Alexander Henderson, I figured, you know, that was the perfect time for you guys to step in and say, hey, you know, we are aware of what's going on or what the case may be, or even if you guys had some kind of information to post out there and assist us with trying to get the district to really look into the issues at the school. So that's one of the things, I was just wondering if you guys have anything planned or what exactly you have moving forward, especially with all the changes that are going on with the schools.
Your question is about three different parts. I'm going to try get each section first. The first section is that, over the years, the PTA involvement by parents has declined tremendously, and so right now, we don't have much of, much of the units, the schools being registered as PTA. I mean, you're working as a PTA in your school, but you're not actually a part of the PTA organization.
Yeah, that's because, most of it too is because of the amount. Remember, you got to pay that 200 and something dollars. If we don't have, how are we going to really?
No, no, no. Now, a school is not required to be Now, a school is not required to pay two hundred and something dollars to become a member of PTA. A school is required to have, each unit is required to have a minimum of fifty parents, pay ten dollars per household, regardless of how much children they have in that school. Fifty parents in order for that unit to be in good standing. It's not, say, the school is required, so that's...
No, but maybe the PTAs need to come up with that amount.
The parent's dues. That's, that's what it is. Each parent, each parents to pay ten dollars for the, if they have three children in the school, it's still ten dollars for the year for their household. And so it's required that fifty parents be registered. Now, even if you have less than that, you are still part, active part of the PTA, you're just that your unit is not in good standing. Now, I've been a PTA member for over thirty years. My oldest daughter is, I can't remember how old she is right now. And I have stayed with PTA up to the time when my second daughter was getting ready. I didn't have a child in, in, in a grade where I needed to be at PTA, and I've stayed. My youngest child is not, has now graduated from Johnsonville University, and she's back home here with a full-time job, living on her own and all of that, and I'm still in PTA. I have issues with that. My issue with that is that a parent who has a child in school should be sitting here and not me. And we, over the years, because when I first started, I had the excuses too, why I couldn't make a meeting, why I couldn't that, or when I could that, until I realized I am giving my children over to somebody else to make all the decision and be all the voice for my children versus myself. And so I had to say, "Look, today I have to leave work half an hour late early because I need to be at the school and speak on the behalf of my child's future." We don't have much of that going on right now. You got a school that has over a hundred and something students, and over two hundred students. Even if it's all of them are single parents, you should have a minimum of a hundred parents sitting in that meeting because some of them have to work evening job. You can't get that. You come to Complex High School, we have one thousand five hundred students and we all in the school, and we have fifteen parents sitting in a PTA meeting. That means fifteen people are making the choices for your children's education and make it be the voice. So the issue is not just the Department of Education. The issue is us as parents. We can advocate for everything else except when it comes to being the voice of what is right and wrong for our children's education. We advocate for things that, you know, I'm on Facebook the other day, and I saw thousands of responses because they were trying to figure out whether, I can't remember her name, should play a character of a, one of those children, Disney character. And all these parents are on there, and they're responding, and they're, midnight, two o'clock in the morning, I'm seeing responses. I put out a message, advocating and saying, "I am now the PTA president of the US Virgin Islands overseeing all PTAs in the Virgin Islands. I don't, I don't care about what happened in the past, let's rebuild, let's restart. Join me, respond, and let me know that you are interested in getting your school back aboard so we can be the voices of our children on the Virgin Islands." I had five shares and four responses. We have a problem. Our problem is not just the Department of Education, it is us.
And to that point, I want to hit you with it. That's the reason why I was saying, maybe we need to collect, because we know the outpouring ain't gonna be enough. But if we collectively start getting these schools together and just say, "Okay", even though I'm from Alexander Henderson, you from Paul B. Larson, we try and get all of them together so that we have a consensus of people making the decision as opposed to five people in Alexander, four people in Paul B., or whatever case may be. Because at the end of the day, that's what the district gonna be using against us. I've always heard, well, you don't have a, you know, they always like to throw out, "You don't have your parent involvement." You know, that's one of the things I keep hearing. Every time you go wrong about something, is the parent involvement. But at the end of the day, I'm a PTA president, and I doing this for free. I ain't getting paid for it, I ain't getting none, you know? But at the same time, you have administrators, they gain, you gain, my tax dollars gain paid, you know, my tax dollars going for your salary. But yet you still trying to put, put the blame off on me, or put the blame off on the parents. You know, at some point, we need to start, just the same way like how they looking into the twenty-first century, we gotta start looking at ideas and ways to really say, "Okay, if this is what, if this is what we have, we gotta deal with what we have and make something out of it."
And I agree with you, and we're gonna be having a lot of training coming up for the next. Right now, the board, the new PTA board, we're doing training with them so that prior to school opening, that the board is gonna disperse within the three islands and go out, visit each school, meet with the PTA members there, talk to you, and bring those PTA units back on board. But again, it is us parents agreeing to sit down and do that on the behalf of our children.
I just, I got one, our last little thing, like, how do I want? I was waiting, it's the last one, I was waiting, so sorry there. Okay, Mr. Sooms, I don't mention about, do you know any idea when work will start? I mean, like I said, I advocating for all the schools, but me personally, I have my thing with Alexander Henderson. When do you, do you know, or do we have any information? My last email to Mr. McGregor, I asked, those are some of the questions that was there. And you know, the email was also CC to Mr. Viallet, Senator Viallet and others. And I haven't received a response yet, so I'm just trying to figure out, do we know when work will start there? I'll add on to, as far as, we know there was some issues with internet as well there. Do we know if that's something that we're gonna be, if that's also included in the plan to go ahead and have all the schools or all, all the original modules outfitted with everything that was originally in the classroom?
Let me answer your first question about when work will begin at the Arthur Richards K-2-8 campus. As you may know, there's, there's school going on there now. They're doing a summer bridge, and they're doing a credit recovery program. And I believe there's a camp there as well with Mr. Keans. So there is, there is some concern about making sure that the campus is clear so that we can go ahead and put things like the awnings that are necessary, and that is a priority for the department. The specific date and when work will start, I do not have that now, but you have my contact information. Please get a hold of me by next week Friday, and we should have a date for you by then.
Okay.
With respect to everything that was in the classrooms at Henderson, being...
Both schools, both schools, from, remember, there were teachers who had everything in there, and when they went, some went with some equipment, others, you know, like, for example, the promethion boat. My understanding is there was one, one remote control that the teachers them had to go around to turn on the promethion boat and all the ones because...
At Henderson or at Arthur Richards?
Well, Henderson or Arthur Richards, the new location, however you want to call it.
Okay, that's something I need to look into, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, well, that's one of the things, that same thing to with printing. When they gonna get printers in there, one of the biggest things I get upset is it takes so long for us to get information, and they'll say, "Oh, well, we can't print." I mean, it's sad that with all these companies and all these FEMA companies have been back and forth, how many printers they been trying, where I'm pointing to the side? This is stuff that we could have been collecting and at least been given to these teachers. So come the new school year, you don't have to wait to go to pay your own money to go to Staples or wherever to print. You could just have a print and print whatever you need to do, you know, whatever information. So those are some of the stuff, again. You see, this is, this is why I, you normally see my face because you're telling me this is the first time you hearing about it, but it just seems a day short that, you know, this hasn't passed up already, you know, this is discussion that been going on.
Well, I will tell you with the merger of the Henderson and Arthur Richards to create the Arthur Richards K-2-8, there's a single leadership. So when you talk about printing, the leadership at Arthur Richards K-8 is quite capable of addressing those issues, and I don't think moving forward that there should be those issues.
We could go back and forth about all the stuff there. Last one, for Mr. Vialle, Senator Vialle. Well, from, you know, like I said, you wanna, you know, you one of the, like I said, I've been looking for allies. You one of the allies that I reached out to at the beginning. And you know, the biggest thing that we've been having is the fact that, you know, funding, funding, funding. Now you being, is there anything that you know, anything that you, the Senate is pushing to try and get some of this funding? Because every time you go and you ask about something that needs to be done, it's about, "Oh, we don't have this money," or either, "We can't do this repair because FEMA says it's gonna be temporary, only temporary repairs," or what's not. Is there anything that the Senate is working on to try and get these hurdles, or, you know, go over these hurdles and get, get the work done at these schools?
Yes, there is. I'm glad you asked that question. There is some, about five point four million dollars in banned proceeds that were dedicated to education that have not been used for some of projects that were completed, and there's money left back. Some are monies for projects that will not be overhead, like about one point nine million dollars is for the track at Charlotte Amali School. That is not going to be a project anytime now because Alita Conkrine is on the track, and that's not gonna be moved for, for years. So I have submitted legislation to reprogram that five million dollars. It's, I think, about three point one for St. Roy and two point something for St. Thomas. But we are waiting ban council to say it's okay for those money to be utilized or maintained. It has been submitted from April. We are waiting the PFA to give us a okay. We have had a discussion with the governor's team and education that we're just waiting for ban council to give us a okay to go ahead and pass the bill. We've been waiting for that okay for about a month now. So they haven't, and I was hoping that it could be used for the summer.